Thanks, Carrie. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board for June 17th, 2021, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22nd, 2021. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 25th, 2021 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8th, 2020, and again on January 6th, 2021. And even though the governor made an announcement recently about the state of emergency, it does in fact remain in effect. As with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the Board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Cappizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman? Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. So on to announcements. I have a few. As Board members and staff are aware, our longtime, much admired, deeply knowledgeable friend and Chairwoman, Wanda Gunning, has made the difficult decision to step down from the Planning Board. So we will work with Wanda to identify a date that works for her when we can all celebrate her leadership and legacy and probably embarrass her with showers of gratitude. The nominating committee has been asked to recommend a new chair and potentially a new vice chair. So we hope and expect they'll report back with nominations at our July 8th special meeting at the latest. Meanwhile, I'll serve as meeting committee is Julie.
Louise, well, at least I'm having, at least I'm having trouble.
Louise, your audio is, is, is not working too well.
And Jeffrey Oakman?
Louise, can you hear us?
Am I?
Right now?
Let me turn off my... What a bad time for that to happen. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. So was the whole announcement?
No, no, it was just to the point when you were talking about the nominating committee will come back.
Okay. So the nominating committee has been asked to recommend a new chair and potentially a new vice chair. We hope and expect they'll report back with nominations by our July 8th special meeting at the latest. The members of the nominating committee are Julie Cappizoli, who is Chair, and also Jeffrey Oakman, Alvin McGowan, and David Cohen. So that, that's the, the end of my extended first announcement.
And if I could just, if I could just...
I have a few others. Please go ahead, Jerry. Yes.
Yeah. In the interim, Ms. Wilson as vice chair will serve as acting chair.
Yes, and I, I said that too, but that might have gotten lost in the translation.
Yeah.
At least I think I did. Oh, okay. Secondly, the, the Landscape Committee meets tomorrow, Friday, the 18th, at 10:00 a.m. Anyone who's not on the Landscape Committee who wants to attend, of course, is welcome, and just let Carrie know she can send you a link. It's a Zoom meeting, of course. We're going to be looking at the Princeton Thanet Road Urban Development, which is an Avalon Bay project, and at the 300 Witherspoon Project. Thirdly, the RFP for Consulting Services related to the comprehensive update of the Community Master Plan remains under Attorney Review, and so has not yet been issued. We hope very much that that review will be complete soon, and we'll get that RFP out the door. As a reminder, the response time to receive proposals is three weeks from the date of the issuance of the RFP. And finally, the next meeting of the Planning Board is scheduled for Thursday, July 1st. Are there any other announcements from Board members or staff?
I just want to make an announcement that Ms. Sacks has joined the meeting.
Oh, great. Thanks. So next up on the agenda, we have minutes from the July 18th, yeah, July 18th, 2029 regular meeting. We received a draft recently, and earlier today, I responded with a couple of requests for clarification, and Carrie kindly consulted with Dan Dobremilski. And so we are making some changes to a couple of paragraphs on page three of the minutes. And Carrie, if you could read the new paragraphs so that people understand, the, the topic here is Landwin, the Landwin Project on Harrentown, and it's a big complicated application that we've heard at a number of meetings and are going to be hearing again soon. And so I think it's important to make sure we got some details right. And so Carrie, if you could read just those two paragraphs that differ from the draft that was sent out earlier today?
Yes.
Or yesterday, whenever that was, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, it's page three, the very first paragraph that starts with Mr. Affrin. "We expanded upon the explanation to read as follows. Mr. Affrin noted that 20 units can be built as of right, and 30 homes are proposed. He asked the criteria for calculating the open space bonus for two lots. Mr. Dobremilski stated that the proposal applies for three bonus options: more than 70% set aside for common open space, and the proposal is 71%, so this equals a 10% bonus plus two lots. And the three-acre parcel dedication of the municipality for affordable housing equals a 30% bonus plus six lots. There is also a, there is more than 1,000 linear feet of walking paths, which equals a 10% bonus plus two lots." And then further down, it's paragraph six. So we have Mr. Muller, Mr. Affrin, Mr. Affrin, Mr. Affrin. Then it starts with asking about the tree removal. Mr. Affrin, and this is the, the paragraph we've changed it to. "Mr. Affrin asked how many trees will be removed. Mr. Dobremilski stated that 682 trees will be removed, and this is just for the infrastructure, comma, not the individual lots. He is unable to anticipate what trees will be lost for the construction of a home. The site has a significant number of trees, and that is it."
Good. So with those changes, Mr. O'Donnell?
No, I have a question when you're at an appropriate breaking point regarding something that has already been discussed.
Okay. Well, let's, let's get the minutes done. If it doesn't relate to the minutes, and then we'll go back to your question. Is that all right?
It does not. That's correct.
Okay. Any other issues or suggestions regarding the minutes? And if not, would someone like to move them?
Let me advise those members available to, able to vote are Ms. Wilson, Mr. Oakman, Ms. Sacks, and Mr. McGowan.
I, I think I saw Ms. Sacks move it.
Move the minute.
Thank you.
Second.
McGowan, seconds. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? I guess others are abstaining. Mr. O'Donnell, your question?
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry to interrupt there. Can you please go back and read the members of the nominating committee for me, please?
Sure. Nominating committee is Julie Cappizoli, who is Chair, Jeffrey Oakman, Alvin McGowan, and David Cohen. And I don't know whether you have a, a committee list in front of you, the last two members?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, okay.
Which was in March.
The last two members are pro-tem members, serving temporarily because Ms. Gunning is, you know, has stepped back from the Board, and because Tim Quinn, who is also on the nominating committee, has recused himself for this decision.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to make that clear because it wasn't matching up with what I had seen on the March 19th memo.
Yes, fair enough. That's a clarification worth making. Thanks. So we can move along now to the discussion of the Witherspoon Street Corridor, and Deanna Stockton, Municipal Engineer, is here to walk us through this, going to set the table and then show us some slides, Ms. Stockton.
I am, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Good evening, everyone. I am Deanna Stockton, the Municipal Engineer, and since 2020, the engineering and planning departments have been working together to put, put together a concept plan for the Witherspoon Street Corridor. Unfortunately, COVID derailed our effort to have an overall concept plan for the entire corridor until, because we have funding from the state of New Jersey that needs to be used for the section from Nassau Street to Green Street. So once we recovered a little bit from COVID, we continued our public engagement process. We had meetings first in February, and then we again restarted meetings in September last year, but the meetings mainly focused on the Witherspoon to Green Street corridor, I'm sorry, Nassau to Green Street corridor. But since that time, earlier this year, we did restart the discussion of the corridor planning, taking into account the section of the roadway from Green Street to all the way to Valley Road. So tonight, I'm going to show you slides that talk about really the entire corridor, but understand right now, the staff are working on Phase One, which is the section from Nassau Street to Green Street. So with that, I'll start sharing my screen. Okay, so make sure it works, and it's not working in just a minute. Okay, so as I discussed, we are looking at improving the Witherspoon Street Corridor in three phases. First phase is Nassau to Green, second, Green to Franklin, and our third section is Franklin to Valley. Also note, in coordination with our first phase of work, the Department of Transportation for New Jersey is also looking at an improvement of the intersection at Nassau and Witherspoon Street. So I wanted to at least show you a little bit of a snapshot of what their current plan is. So in keeping with our establishment of Witherspoon Street as a one-way northbound from Witherspoon Street to Spring Street, the Department of Transportation has proposed this intersection improvement that reduces, it's in accordance to our design as well, it reduces the opening of Witherspoon Street at Nassau. And another big improvement is that there will be an exclusive pedestrian phase for pedestrians that cross that intersection. So all of the vehicular tra, traffic will stop, and pedestrians can move in all directions. Also included in their proposal are curb extensions on both the university side near the Fitz Randolph Gate, as well as on the municipal side near Hamilton and Bank of America. And this is important because the statistics for the number of pedestrians that go through this area are astounding. You know, they're close to, I think, 900 an hour. And so if you are establishing an all pedestrian cross as one of the phases of the traffic signal, we need to have the space for, for pedestrians to wait and, and to still have people get by. So the other important feature of this is that we do have shorter crossing distances as you cross Nassau Street as well as Witherspoon Street. And this is a high priority project for DOT because of the pedestrian crashes that have occurred at the intersection. They are moving ahead using COVID money, and that's why you see the 2022 construction time period. Typically, a DOT project can take three to five years, so we're very fortunate that this one is moving ahead. So then moving on, just to put this in context, Witherspoon Street crosses many zones in the municipality. We have the CBD, we also have residential business, we've got the municipal complex at one end, so there's a variety of uses and demands in the corridor, and a lot of them are business-related. We also have historic districts that we're working with. We've got the Central Historic District, as well as the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. So we are cognizant of that and incorporating that into our design concepts for the roadway. We've also looked at the Bike Master Plan, and while the Bike Master Plan initially shows an enhanced shared marking setup for Witherspoon Street, we know that's challenging. We've heard from the community. And so for Phase One, Phase One, we are not providing any additional bike facilities at this time, but we are looking to enhance bike parking facilities so that we're looking at the parking garage to be able to include more covered bike parking. We'll be looking to have bike corrals and improve what we have in the Tulane Yard as well. So, and for Phase Two and Three, from Green Street to Valley Road, that it's still a work in progress. You know, we've had some discussion with the Bike Advisory Committee, and we are still working on the best way to approach bike facilities in the corridor. And in terms of transit service, with the change in Witherspoon Street being one-way, New Jersey Transit officially and formal, formerly relocated the bus route off of the portion of Witherspoon Street from Nassau to Paul Robeson, and instead, the bus now travels on Paul Robeson to intersect with Witherspoon Street. So in the project limits of the entire corridor, we have multiple bus stops. Some of them have shelters, others do not, and it's a goal for us to add shelters at the remaining bus stops that do not have those. So if you've been to any of the Witherspoon Street meeting, you'll, you'll have seen this photograph on top before from Google Street View. It, it's really, to me, a great indicator of how the road itself, pre-COVID, was so unbalanced in favor of motor vehicle uses. And as you can see in the bottom right corner, you know, you really have such a small, limited area for non-vehicular activities for pedestrians, for other users. So what we're looking at doing is really trying to right-size the road, redistribute the space, create a flexible design, preserve the vitality and the great things of Princeton, but also move into, you know, the next century. Safety is paramount. We have the view shed, you can see in the foreground of the Fitz Randolph Gates and Nassau Hall, so that's another feature that has been a prominent discussion point in the way that the roadway is set up. This is also, you know, the very top end of the Harries Brook watershed. So we're also looking at what can we do to better manage the storm water that's created here, and what can we do to retain and detain it to help lessen the impact downstream? So it's a tall order, and after community meetings and, and many discussions, we, we figured out that the best way to really be able to make some of these significant changes in this road section is to basically get rid of one of the four lanes of space, at least one of the four lanes of space that are currently dedicated to vehicles from, you know, Nassau to Spring Street. So over the course of the last 12 months, we looked at various options, and we are actually still looking at various options, so I do not have a pretty concept for you to look at tonight. Instead, I'll bore you with a lot of words, but just to go through, touch on other topics that I may not have mentioned when we were looking at the previous slides, slide, we're looking at using curb extensions to shorten crosswalk distances, just like the, the DOT has proposed on Nassau Street. We're adding a crosswalk at the Tulane Yard entrance. You know, if you go back to the slide with the jaywalking people, we're trying to formalize that and utilize curb bump outs so that the pedestrians will be more visible to the vehicles that are in that space. We're adding a crosswalk at Wholefish, because there's currently one leg without a crosswalk. Looking to update the Paul Robeson traffic signal to include an exclusive pedestrian phase as well, because there is significant foot traffic that comes through the Witherspoon Street corridor, as well as the Wiggins corridor at that intersection. So let's see, we're, like I mentioned before, bike parking, bus shelter. We're also looking at, with the expanded pedestrian space that's going to occur because of the reduced vehicular space, is incorporating benches, public art, other accessories. We are also, as a separate project but coordinated, looking at wayfinding to direct people better to parking opportunities that are not on the street, but rather in the garages, and also looking at what we can do in the vehicular space that remains to better manage the space for ADA parking, loading, and other needs. And then obviously decreasing our impervious coverage. And we can, we can decrease our impervious coverage by increasing the, the street tree planting, as well as the green infrastructure opportunities. So that's, that's what we're looking at. Here are some pictures that kind of represent what we are moving towards in the concept design. This feature is similar, where it has the plantings and the outdoor dining, as well as this, and this slide as well. So that's really what we're looking at doing is creating a continuous green corridor along the road edge so that it frames the Fitz Randolph Gates at the south end, and it just creates a continuous canopy and green space for the roadway. And then that, these planters also serve, like I said, as green infrastructure to treat and detain the storm water. The section of the road from Witherspoon Street to, or sorry, Nassau Street to Spring Street, we are proposing to use concrete pavers instead of asphalt and concrete, the typical materials that we would use in town. Because we heard from the community, you know, that the number one desire for the space was to be a pedestrian mall close to all traffic. So we're trying to find a flexible, balanced design that provides more pedestrian space, gives us better opportunities if we want to close the street for various activities, for various special events, that it will feel more like a pedestrian space. And so we are also looking at having the same surfacing materials all the way from sidewalks to the road space. And then as we work north through the corridor, looking at continuing the paver material on the sidewalks throughout, because as we met with Witherspoon-Jackson representatives and, and the other folks for the northern section of the project, there was really a desire to continue the same materials, and also just to have this really a promenade effect. So that's, that's what we're looking at. So jumping into the slide for that, looking at the Phase Two and Phase Three, which are green to Valley, utilizing similar materials, having the landscape plan and, and the tree selections continue all the way from Nassau up to Valley. Right-size the roadway, we do recognize the need for on-street parking. And so we, you know, we are cognizant of that. We're also looking at, can we use parking as traffic calming, potentially put parking on the downhill side of Witherspoon Street to calm traffic as they leave the uptown CBD area? We're looking at, again, new crosswalk locations, using curb bump outs to shorten crosswalk distances, but also to give us opportunities, whether it's, you know, for a little bit more of a landscape area, or for an area for the neighborhood to kind of gather. You know, we, we heard that there, pretty much every corner has history tied to it. And so, you know, whatever we can do, you know, if we can provide a bigger pedestrian space where we can put benches and people can gather, we, we hope that that, you know, would be received well from the community. We're looking at interpretive signage opportunities as well. And like I mentioned, really looking at what that north-south bikeway is going to be. And then finally, the treatment of the Franklin Clay Offset Intersection with the new development that will be happening off of Franklin. We want to really look at that because it's a vital link with the school pedestrian traffic. So we'll be looking at that in that third phase of the project, to see how we can improve that area. So then, just moving on, you know, I went through all of the elements of the master plan. We are confident that our project really meets the needs and the desires of the master plan. You know, it says right in the circulation element that the policy of the master plan is to entice people out of their cars and to promote use of mass transit, bicycles, and walking. And by enhancing, especially this first section, the Phase One of Witherspoon Street from Nassau to Green Street, to really make it a special place that honors, you know, the history of the buildings around it, the Fitz Randolph gates at the southern end. And, you know, it almost provides for the residents that live in the area kind of an extension of Heinz Plaza, you know, a pedestrian space where they can get out of their apartments and have an opportunity to have a little bit of green space and have, you know, an outdoor living room, so to speak. So we're definitely improving safety for pedestrians by using the bump outs for adding crosswalks so we can try to reduce jaywalking. We know that will never go away. We are also, just going through, we, like I said, we've worked with New Jersey Transit to make sure that the changes that have been made still provide the level of access to transit that is necessary. And they were comfortable that by relocating the bus line to Paul Robeson with the stop near the cemetery at Green Street, still was sufficiently close to provide access for the downtown area. Looking at protecting and improving visual, historic, and human scale, human scale qualities of Princeton's roadways, maintaining and creating scenic gateways, you know, developing a holistic design for roads and parking lots that integrate landscaping signage, hardscape, as well as safety features. You know, I can go on and on, but, and if you want me to, I will. I have 11 pages printed out from the master plan of the various sections, but.
Yeah, I was going to invite board members to, you know, pose questions or press your views. I know that this will go before too long to council. I mean, you have to come up with, you have to develop a fully engineered plan fairly soon, do you not?
Yes, we do. And actually, that reminded me, I had one more slide. I can show you that slide. So yes, we'll be back at council on June 28th to finalize the concept for Phase One from Nassau Street to Green Street. And then we will also be attending the HPC meeting in July as well to discuss materials and treatments at that meeting. So stay tuned, please. Feel free to come in and view where we're at on that. And we also will keep the webpage updated on that.
Are there questions from, or comments, or Mr. O'Donnell?
I do have a question. And first of all, thank you very much to both you and your entire team for working on this. I'm sure it's been quite the process. And speaking of which, you had mentioned at one point that the overwhelming desire was to create a pedestrian mall at some point. And just for anybody who's watching, who hasn't been following this whole saga, can you explain why the decision was made to go with the one-way vehicle option rather than trying to close off at least part of Witherspoon?
Sure. So while, you know, there are so many stakeholders in the project. And we have the community at large. We also have the property owners in the corridor, as well as the tenants and the business owners. And so the design team and council have been very responsive to hear all sides and to try to find a balance. And that's where, you know, the balance, we think, is being struck by having the one-way traffic that still will provide loading activities for the businesses, as well as access to parking in the parking garages and in other areas of the central business district.
Thank you very much. I just, you know, wanted to make sure that that was in the record.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Oh, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And thank you, Deanna, for the presentation. This looks like a pretty solid plan that, I think Ms. Capazoli and I are the only ones who remain on the board when a similar plan, a plan for the pedestrian, for an all pedestrian use of the top part of Witherspoon was presented back in 2013, I think it was, or 2014, by Kevin Wilks. And it was, it was part of an ambitious plan. And I think that while there was the board, it was warmly received by the board. And I don't know that it would have been as warmly received by, as you mentioned, all the stakeholders. I just had one question, and that's about the, it's about a specific sewer grate at the corner of Witherspoon and Wholefish. I've witnessed multiple extreme rain events where the storm sewer just became overwhelmed and flooded all the way into the public library, Heinz Plaza, into the restaurants that are now on Heinz Plaza. And the belief by amateur engineers was that the pipe was just not large enough under that location for all the water to go through. I'm sure you've considered this and heard this. And if, just for the benefit of the board, you could talk about that? Because it sort of dips there a little bit?
Yep, definitely. So, you know, for the most part, you would say that Witherspoon Street in this area is 100% impervious. You know, we have little tree wells, but they're so compacted, they really don't take in any water. So what TNM associates, our design engineers on the project, are looking at are incorporating green infrastructure that will take the storm water runoff off the road into, you know, we're currently looking at an area that's about five to six feet wide and fairly continuous along both sides of the road. So there's little scuppers that would be used to take the water from the road, put it into this green infrastructure for quality treatment, but also to help detain and slow down the water. So there will be an underdrain in these green infrastructure areas. But the time of concentration, which is, you know, an engineering term of how quickly does the water get from point A to point B and create that problem that you talk about? You know, it can be slowed down because we are putting it into this green infrastructure and using the soil to clean it and slow down its progress. So, you know, we're very cognizant of that as an opportunity. We've also asked TNM, wherever possible, if we can add any more pipes in the ground to help us detain water to solve that very issue, you know, that you mentioned, that I saw that I think many people experienced. Whatever we can do at this top end of the watershed, we're going to try to do. I mean, you can only imagine with the age of our community, there's a lot of stuff in the road. So, but TNM are great designers and capable of finding opportunities wherever they can to address issues like this. So yeah, we are looking at other opportunities so that we don't have that water surcharging out of the inlets and flooding the library and businesses. But I will point out, that was like a 500-year storm, so.
Except we had two of them within a three-year period.
Yes.
I think we need to redefine 500-year storms.
We hear you. That is a big topic in the engineering department.
And I think DEP is on that, too.
Yes.
And we at the Planning Board can take opportunities as well. I mean, this makes me think of the reduction in the rate of runoff from the Griggs Corner property, which right now is 100% impervious. And after the new, you know, fairly recently approved project is built, it'll have a green roof, it'll have, you know, the runoff will, some of the water will stay on-site. And what leaves the site will leave in lower, you know, at a slower rate. So if those kinds of things can be replicated as other downtown projects come in front of us, you know, we can do our part, too. So it looks like you've checked a lot of boxes, Deanna. I would just say, when it comes to Phases Two and Three and addressing bike mobility on the more northerly sections of Witherspoon is just so important right now. It's just a dangerous place for bikes. And there's absolutely a ton of bike activity and bike traffic on Witherspoon between Paul Robeson and Valley Road. You know, there's the school, there's our neighborhood with so many people who rely on bikes for transportation, you know, to commute and whatnot. And so that's just, you know, making these streets safer for bikes and pedestrians is just so important. And I love the idea, too, of the pavers in the roadway in the first section that you're talking about. You know, when, I'm sure other people have had this experience when you go to other places that have narrowed roadways and really made them, you know, more complete streets and much more accessible and comfortable places for bikes and pedestrians. They're like people magnets, you know? And then you have foot traffic, and that's great for business. And, you know, so I can't wait to see it all happen. Sorry, I'm sort of going on and on. Anybody have any other comments? I know we have a lot to try to get to tonight. Questions, comments? Thank you very much, Deanna.
Thank you.
Seeing the final design and moving ahead.
Thank you. And I'll, you know, I'll plan to come back as we get further along with Phases Two and Three, especially because we do have, you know, the bike and pedestrian question that's still out there. We haven't quite figured out how to handle all of it. Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too. The next item on the agenda is an application. This is from the trustees of Princeton University, a minor site plan. This is 91 and 110 to 116 Prospect Avenue, Block 50.01, Lot 18, file number P2121-012PM. Project that's garnered a lot of interest. Mr. Mueller, you were about to say.
Yeah, just the proof of publication and service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I was going to give a brief introduction. Should I be sworn in?
Yes.
Absolutely. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give to be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirm? Please state your full name for the record.
Michael La Place. I'm the planning director and municipal planner for Princeton.
Go ahead, Mr. La Place.
Good evening, everyone. Before you tonight are two applications. The first one is a minor sub, a minor site plan application with variance request. But both applications this evening are related to one project. And that project is the proposed new environmental science and School of Engineering and Applied Sci, I'm sorry, Environmental Studies and School of Engineering and Applied Science Complex for Princeton University. It's a very large complex that's being proposed. It'll be totaling over 660,000 square feet. And most of the complex will be along the northerly side of Ivy Lane. It'll start from the west going to the east. If you know where Five Ivy Lane is, an existing building which will be demolished, it sort of starts there. And then moving westward, it'll go along Ivy Lane, encompassing many of the existing parking lots, as well as the Ferris Thompson apartment complex. It'll also, moving in a northerly direction towards Prospect Avenue, it'll involve the demolition of a building that has an address 87 Prospect. It's sort of mid-block. And then it also includes the site, which is the subject of this minor site plan application of 91 Prospect Avenue. And that is the site of the former Court Club Eating Club, and now used for university offices. The minor site plan application also involves, if you jump across Prospect Avenue, moving north, there's three existing residential structures owned by the university. Their addresses are 110 through 116 Prospect Avenue. And they're also a subject of this application. The university would like to build a component of the new Environmental Sciences and Engineering School complex, a northerly extension of it on the site of the Court Club at 91 Prospect Avenue. So the proposal, which you'll be hearing about from the applicant, is to move the Court Club across the street in a site that where the three houses currently are. And the proposal is to demolish the three houses to create a site for the relocated Court Club building. So that's sort of the main part of the project. The sites are located in educational districts, E2 and E3 of the former borough. The uses are permitted. As I said, there's a variance as part of this application, the minor site plan application, which involves.
Mr. La Place, your audio cut out.
Michael, you're still out.
Yeah, you're still out. Okay, am I back?
Yes. Yes.
All right, the one variance as part of the minor site plan application involves the sighting of the Court Club building as its proposed relocation across the street. So you'll hear about that from the applicant. I'm going to talk fast before my audio fades out again. No one's ever told me that I need to talk faster, but here goes. I just wanted to note that the, what else I wanted to say? Talked about the zoning. Historic preservation has been a big part of the discussion for this application, as well as its sister application that you'll be hearing afterwards. And this did receive an advisory review by the Historic Preservation Commission. It was also before SBRAB. Some of the reasons why are obviously the age and architectural character of the four buildings on Prospect Avenue that I just mentioned, the Court Club, and then the three houses across the way. And the issue is that in our master plan, in the Princeton Community Master Plan, it does list what's called Club Row, which are the row of eating houses, eating clubhouse that were built along Prospect Avenue as an eligible local district. It's not a designated local district. So right now, it doesn't have protection as a designated district. But it is mentioned in the master plan, so I wanted to make that clear. And it's also good to note that this entire area is part of the overall Princeton Historic District that's on the state and national register. Of both the New Jersey and federal register of historic places. But again, it is not a locally designated structure or district at this point. So I think with that, I'll, I'll, I'll finish my comments and give it back to the chair.
Thanks, Michael. So, Mr. Degrassia, I see that you are leaning forward in your chair and you're ready to take off. I, I guess I want to say upfront, of course, we want to hear what, what you have to say. And I know that that's a, will be a sort of a belly full. And also we will here tonight, of course, for members of the public, but we'll give the, the experts that have been, in addition to giving the, the university all the time that it needs. We're also giving the folks who have organized around historic preservation concerns more than the usual three minutes for their historic expert and a planning expert. So I just wanted to, to say that on the front end as a courtesy to everyone. And then we will, after that, take, take public comment and ask members of the public to confine their remarks to, to three minutes if possible and so, Mr. Degrassia, do you want to proceed and swear some folks in or? I'm sorry, you don't swear the men, Mr. Muller swears the men, but do you, do you want to speak first and then?
Sure.
Get your experts sworn in or, okay.
Or we could start, I mean, Jerry, do you prefer to have our, our team sworn in?
Why don't we do that? Just, why don't we do that just to get that out of the way? So if everybody on the university's team who will or may testify can raise their right hand, I'll swear you all in. Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. So sworn or affirm, if we can go around and each person give their full name and spell their last name. Ron, you, you want to start?
Ron McCoy, university architect, MCC OY.
Tom O'Shea, Vanode Harvey Associates, civil engineer.
Let me direct this. Alan Metcalfe, can you go next?
Yes, Alan Metcalfe, principal at Metcalfe Architecture and Design, M E T C A L F E.
James Corner. Oh, you're, you're on mute, Jim.
James Corner, Field Operations. Princeton's landscape architect.
George Jacomar.
George Jacomar, B F J Planning, traffic consultant and parking consultant, J A C Q U E M A R T.
Meredith Bizdak.
Meredith Bizdak, B Z D A K. I'm an architectural historian and a principal with Mills and Schnoring Architects.
Emily Kirkland.
Emily Kirkland, Anyad Architects. I'm an associate principal at Anyad Architects.
Taiyang Park. Taiyang, well, okay, let's, I'm not sure, Taiyang, why don't you introduce yourself in case you do speak?
Yeah. My camera is not working now, but I'm less architect at James Corner Field Operations.
Mark Gabriel.
Mark Gabriel with Niche Engineering.
Molly McGowan. You're on mute.
Thank you. Molly McGowan, partner at Anyad Architects and McGowan spelled A N instead of E N, Mr. McGowan.
Charlie Tennyson.
Charlie Tennyson, Director for Transportation and Parking Services at Princeton. My last name's T E N N Y S O N.
Bradley Gay.
Lou Bradley Gay from Metcalfe Architecture and Design, project manager and architect. Last name is G A Y.
Mark Ken Gerzo.
Mark Gerzo, Princeton University, project manager, last name is K I N N, I've needed G, U R, Z is in zebra O.
Tatiana Chulika. You're on mute.
Tatiana Chulika, Landscape Architect, Principal at Field Operations.
Mark Wilson.
Mark Wilson.
Excuse me, Mr. McCoy. Ms. Trulica, can you spell your name, please?
Yes, sorry, C H O U L I K A.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you say you were an architect?
Landscape architect.
Landscape architect, principal at James Corner Field Operations.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Wilson.
Mark Wilson, Program Executive, Office of Capital Projects, Princeton University.
Stone Beisho.
Stone Beisho, Landscape Architect from James Corner Field Operations, B E S S H O.
Robin Izzo.
Robin Izzo, Executive Director of Environmental Health and Safety, Princeton University, last name I Z Z O.
Peter Broughton.
Sorry for the technical difficulties. Peter Broughton, project architect, Anyad Architects, B as in boy, R O U G H T O N.
Okay, I see Richard Orcott is visiting us from Iceland, but I'm not going to swear him in because he might go to sleep. All right, I think, I think that's our village for tonight.
Thank you very much for giving us some order there. Really appreciate that. Mr. Degrassia, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I'm Christopher Degrassia from the law firm Figury, Drinker, Biddle and Reef, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. As Mike Michael described, we have two projects on the agenda this evening. The ESNCs, which as he said, is the Environmental Studies and School of Engineering and Applied Sciences. This is a state of the art laboratory in educational development. It's one of the university's most important educational developments that will probably occur in our lifetime. It is, a lot goes into creating a world-class facility. If, you know, to attract and retain some of the best minds in the world. It has a lot of space requirements and it also has a lot of programmatic needs. As part of the development, as Michael indicated, there's a lot of structures that will be removed or demolished, including a sea of parking lots, Ferris Thompson 87. And one of the structures that's earmarked for removal is 91 Prospect Avenue. The university would like to save this structure. It's evaluated whether it could use it onsite, whether it could be relocated and has determined that the only viable option is to move it across the street, which is actually a very nice location. It's on the same street, it's been, fits into the neighborhood, it's spatially compatible, it's a permitted use. This first application this evening is all about saving 91 Prospect Avenue. If the application is approved, 91 Prospect will have a new home. If it's not approved, 91 Prospect will be demolished, which will be unfortunate because the university has gone through great lengths to try to save it. It's not very easy to, to kind of pick up a building and just move it. And the university has been really dedicated to try to save this building. And with that intro, I'd like to swear, actually, Ron, you're already sworn in, but I would like to introduce university architect Ronald McCoy, who's a licensed engine, engineer in New Jersey.
Licensed architect.
Oh, I'm sorry, talking about engineers, licensed architect. University architect should be licensed architect. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, I, I accept that apology. I'm, I'm all, I've recovered. All right, let me, let me share my screen and begin the presentation. I trust people can see the screen.
Yes, and let's mark that as exhibit A1.
Okay, slide one.
Right, the entire PowerPoint presentation, okay.
Yes, yes. Okay. Well, I think this conversation has been well framed by Mr. La Place and by Christopher. So I'm going to, just on this slide, just reiterate that the purpose of this application is to save the building that's located currently at 91 Prospect. As you've just seen from our introductions, I'm here with a, a team of consultants, experts. And they are here to help answer any questions that we might have about, any questions you may have about the present, about the project. Okay, on slide two.
I'm sorry, Ron, did, Jerry, did we say we marked this as exhibit A1?
Yes.
Okay.
Entire PowerPoint presentation.
Is it PowerPoint? Okay, great, thank you.
And Ron, as you noted, as you go through, if you could identify what's.
I'll do my best. All right, I'm going to linger here on slide two a bit. I want to use this slide to describe a little bit of the background of our planning for this project. In our 2026 campus plan, we undertook what's called a planning level assessment of the needs of the university for environmental studies and seeds. That means it's not particularly detailed, but was enough to know the general, gave us a general idea of the programmatic needs and the size of a site that we would need. At that time, and as it was published, the plan showed that we would need this entire site. When we hired our architects, we began a detailed analysis of the programmatic requirements and the site capacity. Those studies confirmed that the entire site was required. Along the way, we tested and confirmed that we could not repurpose 91 Prospect to meet the needs of the project. At that point, we made a choice. We had to either demolish 91 Prospect or save the building by moving it across the street. We obviously realized that moving it across the street would result in the demolition of existing buildings at 110, 114 and 116. But in our evaluation and the evaluation of our consultants, we believe that saving 91 Prospect was a higher priority. Let me also talk a little bit more about the program. In preparation for this meeting, I had a email chat with Thanos Panagiotopoulos, the chair of our Department of CBE. And he gave me a little bit of detailed description of the role that the theorist pavilion plays. And it's a theorist pavilion that is being put into the location where 91 Prospect is currently located. What he says is at the north end of the CBE building, the Chemical and Biological Engineering Building, will be the home to groups that are doing theory and simulation. And it's called, it's dubbed the Theory Pavilion. Modeling and simulation research in the building will result in better processes for the production of new materials, greater energy efficiencies, tools for addressing climate change and carbon sequestration, and the development of new pharmaceuticals and vaccines. Indeed, chemical and biological engineering has been at the forefront of the vaccine development for COVID. The program requires close integration of theoretical and experimental work. It's essential, key to the proper functioning of the research activities within CBE. There are several groups that span both the theory, which is in the pavilion, and the experimentalists, which are in the building behind the theory building. An example is quantum chemistry, where calculations for better catalysts are tested immediately in the labs. So there's a back and forth play between the theorist pavilion and the labs. A state-of-the-art building with plentiful collaborative and scientific visualization spaces is necessary for attracting and retaining top talent among our faculty, students and technical staff. Let me talk a little bit about 91 Prospect, the existing building. In just about every way, the existing building is not viable for those requirements, functional technical requirements that I just described from Thanos. The planning board report states that the existing building can be updated and can be used for the theorists. This is simply not true. With respect, the planning board doesn't have any information related to the detailed program requirements of the facility. And the staff has no basis on which to make this statement. In fact, the building is 40% too small to fit the program. It lacks programmatic adjacencies, it has limited daylight, it's not accessible. It doesn't have the connected floor-to-floor levels with the, between the theorist pavilion and the, the chemical and biological engineering to the south. It's off, those floor levels are off by either six feet or nine feet. The building does not support collaboration required for successful research. It simply does not support the programmatic requirements. We have success successfully repurposed buildings all the time. We know when it can work, we also know when it cannot work. This one does not work. All right, staying on this slide, I just want to talk a little bit more about the state and national register listed Princeton Historic District. That district is indicated here on this plan by that, that red, red rectangle or the red dash line. There, there is not any local district associated with 91 Prospect or 110 or 114 or 116 Prospect. This means there's no authorization for local historic review for 91 Prospect or 110 or 114 or 116 Prospect. State and federal reviews are not applicable to the proposed relocation of 91 Prospect because there is no undertaking as defined by the New Jersey Register of Historic Places Act or the National Historic Preservation Act. This state and national district spans 225 acres. Just to the western end of Princeton campus, it's about 1.25 miles long. It includes much of the central part of town and every building between Nassau Street and Dylan Gymnasium on the central campus. It is an enormous and diverse district. It is not a local district. Finally, on this slide, I want to say that our plan for environmental studies proposes to replace the building with a new building that fits the program and also provides an opportunity for an appropriately scaled campus entry. The population on this site alone with the future development area, you see at the bottom right of the plan for, for electrical and computer engineering. That population will be 1,270 employees. That's the size of a small liberal arts college. An appropriately sized entrance to that campus is, is appropriate. And I just want to say that there's been a lot of criticism or concern that this is a beginning of a slippery slope that, that we're going to, the university is going to begin to take over eating clubs. And I think how the history and the record shows that this is a once in every 275 year campus development. Is it once in an opportunity to connect the campus north of Prospect to the campus to the south of Prospect? Our history on Prospect Avenue is primarily one of stewardship and that's the history that we continue to, that we intend to continue. All right, now, I'm going to ask Meredith Bizdak to talk more, more specifically about the historic preservation evaluation that we did on this project.
Thanks, Ron. I'm Meredith Bizdak. I'm an architectural historian.
Christopher, can you qualify her?
Yes. Yeah, I was just going to say, Meredith, can you tell us, I think you were, you're telling us a little bit about your qualifications.
Sure.
She was anticipating it, Jerry. She started without us.
Okay.
I'm an architectural historian. I have a PhD in art and architecture, architectural history. I have over 30 years of experience and I'm a principal with Mills and Schnoring Architects here in Princeton.
And you've testified before this board before?
I have testified before this board.
Thank you.
So I am here tonight to tell you a little bit more about our due diligence that we did as part of this project. We worked with the university to consider all of the historic resources as the overall planning process. I'm going to elaborate on our preservation strategy and provide just a little more information on 91 Prospect as well as 110, 114 and 116 Prospect. Our work involved a combination of research, fieldwork and a lot of team discussion. And one of the first things that we always evaluate is current designation status and any preservation regulations might be applicable within the project area. With respect to 91 Prospect and 110, 114, 116 Prospect, as you've already heard, none are considered local, considered individual local landmarks. None are included in a designated local district. None are individually designated on a state or national level, and there have been no determinations of eligibility. 91 Prospect is a contributing resource within a state and national historic district, the Princeton Historic District. But that does not mean it's regulated for the purpose of this application. But that does not mean it's regulated for the purpose of this application. And 114 or 110, 114, 116 Prospect are not included within the boundaries of the state and national register historic district, either originally or in the 2017 expansion of the district that focused on the eating clubs. For the.
Meredith, Meredith, just to be clear, so there were two opportunities for those buildings to be included?
The original district nomination was prepared in the 1970s. They were not included at that time. And then there was an expansion and actually a sort of clarification of that nomination that was certified in 2017 that added one more eating club and provided additional information on the existing eating clubs that are already in the district.
Thank you.
Expanded slightly, very slightly. So a little more background on these buildings. Start with 91 Prospect was constructed in 1927 as Court Club and designed by an architect named Grofner Wright. It was expanded in 1955, 1956 by Raymond Olson and basically brought up to a configuration that was originally envisioned by by Mr. Wright back in the 1920s. It ceased operations as an eating club in 1964 and was purchased by the university at that time. And it was repurposed as part of Stevenson Hall in 1968 and converted to offices somewhat later in 2001. 110, 114, and 116 Prospect were all built in the last quarter of the 19th century as private residences. And all three were originally located on the south side of Prospect and moved to their present site on the north side in the 1920s as the larger masonry clubs began to displace the smaller frame buildings that had once lined Prospect. Part of the story of this street is a story of change and evolution. This was certainly a major part of it. 110 was purchased from a private resident by Key and Seal Club in 1904 and expanded by 1907 while it was still on the south side. It had two more additions by 1918 and in the mid 1920s became Arbor Inn and Arbor moved it across Prospect to the north side. It was purchased by the university in 1928, renovated and divided into multiple units. 114 was built as a private residence, also moved in the 1920s, has some original Queen Anne detail remaining and was purchased by the university in 1928. It was used as faculty housing and later as student housing. And some notable university faculty may have lived at 114 as well. 116 likewise was built as a private residence and moved in the 1920s. Queen Anne in style, but modified much more extensively than the property at 114. It has an enclosed porch and expansion to the rear. It was purchased by the university in 1928 and the interior was reconfigured for use as faculty offices. There's very little original detail remaining on the interior of the building. 110, 114, and 116 Prospect are all relatively typical examples architecturally of late 19th century dwellings with varying degrees of integrity as a result of changes to use and occupancy over the last hundred years. We agree with the 1995 Prospect Avenue District Report that they are part of the street's visual and institutional history and would have been appropriate additions to the Princeton Historic District when the increase was prepared in 2016, 2017. But importantly, they were never added to the Princeton Historic District. And even had they been this current project, as you've heard, would not be subject to regulatory review. In contrast, 91 Prospect has a higher degree of integrity and has already achieved a level of distinction by inclusion in the state and national register listed Princeton Historic District as a contributing element. So the team's dialogue centered on the way in which all of these buildings could potentially be reused and adapted within the larger context of the new ES and Cs project. The dialogue was multidisciplinary and included thoughtful consideration of community development, campus connectivity, appropriate fit, sustainability, and other topics. We recognize that to achieve all of the goals of the project, priorities needed to be established. And as you've heard, a plan to save the building at 91 Prospect by relocating it across the street emerged for the following reasons. The building was already recognized as a significant historic resource based on its inclusion in the designated state and national historic district, even though it's not subject to regulatory review in this project. It retained the highest level of integrity. It could continue to be used in the current manner without compromising any character defining features, either on the exterior or interior. And it had a stronger relationship to the character of Prospect Avenue as it was developed over the 20th and 21st centuries than the earlier buildings. And ultimately, we believe that it can continue to serve as a contributing building within the listed historic district and are prepared to support that by opening a dialogue with the state Historic Preservation Office.
Okay, I think we're going to move on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me just say for the record, since I neglected to before, that we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. You're looking at a few historic photographs of 91 Prospect. The one on the left shows the building shortly after it was completed without the 1950s addition, which is the the wing that would have been on the left. And you can see that wing under construction in the bottom right image. In the top, top right photograph, that's a current day photograph of the main historic space within the building, which retains all of its character defining features today and and would also continue to keep those features and be restored, renovated, rehabilitated, once it's moved across the street.
Okay, thanks, Meredith. So I'm going to move on. This is slide five. This talks about the university's recent experience or last 20 years with respect to stewarding existing buildings in our inventory, both on campus and in the neighborhood. The university supports the goals of historic preservation, and we have a record of being an exceptionally strong stewards of preservation. As I just said, this slide shows just over the past 20 years, we have preserved, restored, rehabilitated more than 80 historic buildings and landscapes. As a discipline, historic preservation has never been about stomping time or freezing the past. Most ordinances around historic preservation, including the Princeton Ordinance, although it does not apply to this project, encourage preservation of existing buildings, but they do not prohibit demolition. Historic preservation has always been about managing change. Successful cities evolve when they include both preservation and new development. It is not an either or proposition. Change and preservation are constantly balanced in the evolutions of cities, towns, and campuses. We believe this project needs to be seen in the context of our strong record of stewardship. We always prefer to rehabilitate heritage buildings whenever we have a chance, whenever there is a reasonably good fit to the function that has that has to be housed. That does not apply in this project. I've shown you that the function does not fit. Our goal, therefore, is to save 91 Prospect and to use the building for which it currently serves, which is a good fit, which is the offices of the dean for for research. Now I'm on slide six. This just shows some examples of that university stewardship over the past 20 years. There are notable projects on here such as Bainbridge House, College Road Apartments, For Mercer, 185 Nassau, and dozens of more projects to support the principles of the historic preservation ordinance. Even in the neighborhood of Prospect Avenue, our stewardship includes many buildings. Corwin, Bendheim Campus Club, Carl Field Center, formerly the Elm Club, with a contemporary addition, Bobstall, and the apartments at 119 Prospect. In all of these instances, we've been able to accommodate a fit between the program and the and the existing buildings. We know when it works and we know when it does not work. Again, I just want to say there's no slippery slope to our action here. This is a once in a 275 year project. Right now, talking about some of the details of the site, now we're on slide eight. This is just an aerial view showing the 91 Prospect on the south side of Prospect Avenue and the existing 110, 114, 116 on the north side of the street, just for orientation. Slide nine here shows the relocation strategy of moving the building from the south side of the street to the north side of the street. Basically, the building is lifted off its foundation, put on a steel frame, and moved to the to the north side of the street, and it's rotated so the front door faces the street. Slide 10 shows the the position of the building on the north side of the street. The important thing here to see is the you'll see the dashed outlines of the existing buildings on the site. And you'll see a red dashed outline around the building. Those are the logistics that are required to manipulate the construction activity of pulling the steel structure out from underneath the relocated building and putting it on its new foundation. Now, on slide 11, this is simply addressing the variance request, which is part of this application. This illustrates the 250-foot residential buffer from the edge of the R3 zone, which is shown here over in the right. That is, that's the regulatory buffer that's required. Obviously, the three buildings there that exist are grandfathered in, but they do not comply with that buffer. The relocation, now we're on slide 11. I'm sorry, slide 12, the relocation of 191 to this side of the street reduces the nonconformity of that of that condition and increases the buffer from the from the property line to 116 feet.
So Ron, just if I can interrupt here for a second.
Sure.
This side actually shows the spatial relationship between the building and the garage and the building and the apartments. The measurement for the buffer district actually runs from the residential zone line, which is not the building. So it's slightly less than 116. It's actually changing the buffer, which is currently 11 feet to 105 feet. So there's a 94-foot increase of the buffer.
Thank you. One other thing to point out on this slide, and we'll talk about it when we get to the landscape slides, is you'll see the mature landscape that are at the western end of the site and at the eastern end of the site. So there's a very mature landscape between the proposed location and the garage to the to the west and to the apartments on the on the east. This is slide 13, and it simply is a diagram of the rehabilitation that will undergo on the building as it is as it's relocated. So you'll see that as we move the building to the new site, we will install a new slate roof. We will repoint the brick. We'll add copper flashing, gutters and downspouts, repair the cast stone window surrounds and increase the mechanical system, upgrade, upgrade the mechanical system, and then sit the building on a on a new foundation. So this is the stewardship that will be applied to this particular building. Okay, so now we're on slide 14. I'm going to ask James Corner to come in here and speak over the next few slides about the the landscape plan.
Hello, I'll introduce myself. I'm James Corner.
We need to get you qualified, James. Can you, can you?
That's what I'm, what I'm doing. I'm James Corner, CEO with Field Operations, a landscape architecture firm based in New York. I've had over 30 years of professional experience, licensed in New Jersey and 15 other states in the US. Emeritus professor at the University of Pennsylvania. I've testified before this board several times before, and we have the great pleasure of being of serving as Princeton's landscape architect.
Thank you, we accept your qualifications.
So from a landscape point of view, the job of the landscape here is to continue really the pastoral, the sort of charming and mature characteristic of Prospect. Many of these trees are preserved on the site. They're on the perimeter of the site. Some of them have significant canopies. We're able to actually preserve the majority of them. We do need to remove 12. 20 remain. And in the next slide, Ron, I think it shows the replacement.
The slide 15.
26 new trees. They include five elm trees on the sidewalk of Prospect and a number of other trees, including the Kentucky coffee tree, holly, elm, cedar, and pine to enhance the overall character of the landscape. The new building will sit on lawn, which is very similar to its existing setting as well as the other houses along along Prospect Avenue. Next.
Slide 16.
You can see here, the majority of the site is lawn in the hatched area. A lot of the existing mostly ground cover below the existing trees is actually retained and enhanced in some cases. Next.
Slide 17.
And the materiality is again very familiar and traditional. We have a brick paving to bring people to and from the house. Those are ADA compliant pathways as well as a bluestone paving and bluestone terraces at both the front and the back of the house. And next.
I think we're going to hand this off to Tom O'Shea from Ben and Harvey to talk about the stormwater management strategies. Thank you, James.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, Ron. Tom O'Shea from Ben and Harvey need to be qualified?
Yes. Can you please give us your education, Tom, and your licensing information?
I may have a BS in civil engineering. I also have a professional engineering license in the state of New Jersey and have appeared before this board numerous times.
Thank you, we accept your qualifications.
Thank you. First of all, the existing property currently does not have stormwater features at all. And the whole idea with the stormwater for this site is really low impact development. What we have is we're reducing the impervious surface. We're constructing on previously disturbed areas, and we're not adding any motor vehicle surfaces. We're maintaining existing vegetation where practical and we're maintaining existing drainage patterns. The green infrastructure is well nestled within the landscaping. The stormwater management includes rain garden, which is a biofiltration basin on the northerly portion of the site. There's a bio retention basin on the western portion of the site. And in order to maximize groundwater infiltration, we have an infiltration trench which is collecting the roof drainage. And we're proposing that that infiltrates prior to connecting to the storm system. So we're we're meeting requirements of the municipality of on stormwater as well as the design goals of Princeton University.
And Tom, aren't you exceeding them in some ways because there's no increase in pervious? So it really doesn't.
That's right. I started off by saying that part of the plan was the reduction of impervious surface.
So these are, some of these are well beyond what's required.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. So slide 19 here is simply an overall illustrative site plan. Slide 20 is the a slide that just gives you a sense of the character of the interior of the building. Meredith, I don't know if there's anything you want to say about about this.
The image on the left is again that great room. It's the main space. It's within the central bay of the building. And the stair hall that you're looking at is actually a 1950s detail, but certainly one of the most intact and interesting details of the newer wing of the building.
Okay. Hold on, I'm going to stop sharing for a second. I'm going to ask Kristen to pull up her presentation. I believe I might have a slightly outdated version. So Kristen, can you pull up your version?
Is that visible to everyone?
Yes.
Listen, I'm going to have to swear you in.
Yes.
If you could raise your right hand, swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Kristen Applegate, A.P.P.E.L.G.E.T. I'm the Director of Community and Regional Affairs for Princeton University. And I don't have a license.
Kristen, can you go back one slide before Ron goes forward? I just want to mention one thing.
Madam Chair, may I may I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Yes.
Just about Ms. Applegate's qualifications. Will she be testifying in regards to historic preservation?
No.
I'm just going to forward the slides, Mr. LePlace.
Okay, thank you.
We we realized Ron pulled up the wrong one in the last one, so Kristen has it available.
Okay. Thank you.
All I all I wanted to do is mention is one of the the benefits of moving this across the street is to preserve the integrity of the interior like the the steps that as you see it now. When we were looking at trying to make this work, which we can't, even at a minimum, most of these features would have to be lost and stripped out, but you know, it still doesn't work in place. But one of the nice things about relocation is that it will allow that interior integrity to remain intact. Thanks.
Okay, let's go to slide 21. All right. With the next few slides, we want to reiterate some of the regulatory boundaries on the of the existing historic districts. Let's go ahead, 122. So as we have said, well, I do, I also want to point out that I think Mr. Place's introduction to this meeting was was accurate. But I would say that at the HPC meeting, the report from the HBO and the HPC memo and the presentation from Clifford Zink at that meeting were both unclear and or incorrect with respect to existence of historic districts, the boundaries of those historic districts and the regulatory authority of those historic districts. As this as this slide shows, only slide 91 is in the Princeton Historic District, and this is the 225 acre Historic District. 110, 114, 116 are outside of that district. So we want to clarify that there's no, also, there's no regulatory authority for historic review of this project at all. The state and national district here are shown in the peach color, as I said, 91 is located in that state and national district. The local historic districts are shown in green, and you can see 110, 114 and 116 are not in any of those historic districts. 91 is located on the state and registered state and national register listed Princeton Historic District. So just to summarize, as we've said it many times, there's not any local historic district associated with 91, 110, 114 or 116. And that means there's no local historical review. State and federal laws reviews are not applicable to the proposed relocation of 91 because there is no undertaking as defined by New Jersey Register of Historic Places Act or the National Historic Preservation Act. 110, 114 and 116 Prospect are not contained within any historic property at all. The presentation material that I referred to earlier from the HPC meeting assumed that there was either a Prospect Avenue District or a Club Row District. It's important to reiterate again and again that they do not exist. They were suggested for consideration 30 years ago, but that suggestion was never advanced. In in detail, a nomination report was never studied or submitted. Neighboring property owners were never notified. The boundaries were never defined for public comment. The commission did not convene a public hearing. The commission did not submit a report to the council. The council did not hold a hearing and the planning board did not hold a master plan hearing. All of these steps would be required in order for any comments related to a Princeton Avenue District or a Club Row District to have any standing in this application. So the application cannot be evaluated against a district that does not exist, a district that did not go through any of those steps that I just identified. Just as a scenario. Imagine, well, I just want to say that the the steps required to to identify a district are there to serve and protect all property owners. Imagine if you lived in town or you just moved to Princeton and you decide to buy a property near the center of town. The location is great, although the home you buy doesn't quite meet all your needs. You do all your homework, you check the zoning regulations and you even verify that it's not subject to any historic preservation regulations. Over time, you decide you want to rebuild and you develop your home that fits your needs and it's also compatible with the scale of adjacent buildings. After careful planning and designing a new project, you submit your plans to the town. Then you learn that there's an opposition to your project because 30 years ago there was a suggestion to consider creating a historic district that would include your property. The suggestion never went through any of the regulatory process required for adoption, and so the district in fact does not exist. But just to state it again, the regulatory process is designed to prevent this kind of scenario from happening. It's it's required to serve and protect all property owners, and it has never been exercised on this project. So again, let's remember there's no triggering event related to this project and the 225 acre national district called the Princeton Historic District. And therefore, there's no historic regulatory control. There are no local districts that would require local historic review. And most of the assertions that were presented at the HPC meeting, including the presentation I alluded to, are not accurate or correct. We will not respond to each one of those assertions because in essence, there's no historic regulatory control over this application other than to note assertions related to the following are incorrect and have no regulatory standing or control over this project. One, that the design bifurcates the district. Two, that the project must protect the integrity of the historic setting. Three, that the insertion of new construction is not permitted. Or four, that the Ferris Pavilion is incompatible. Let's go to the next slide. I think I've I've touched on all of these issues on the on the on the previous slide. Let's go to the final slide, which is I actually know, can you go back? We're in slide, go back one, we'll stay here. Go back one, right now we're in 22. So just to summarize a little bit about definitions, to be historic, a property must be 50 years of age and have a high degree of integrity and possesses historic significant. But to be subject to a review process, historic properties have to be designated as such by a local ordinance or through the state and national register process. That is not the case with 110, 114 or 116 Prospect. The structures themselves are not designated as landmarks. There is no Club Row or Prospect Avenue local historic district. There is no regulatory authority for this review. Similarly, while in the national, while in the state and national historic district, 91 Prospect is not in a local historic district and not subject to state and federal historic review. To describe a building as historic is simply to describe the age of the building. It is not synonymous with any condition of being regulated. All right, let's go to slide 23. I think I've made this point that there are no local historic districts. I would also say, like to say a little about the National Park Standards. These standards and guidelines guide preservation work in a consistent manner at the national tribal state and local levels. In some cases, the standards can be regulatory when there is a government action. Princeton University regularly uses these standards voluntarily on campus projects. They are not applicable at 110, 114, 116 Prospect as the buildings are not protected by any state, local or national designation. And they are not applicable at 91 Prospect because there's no governmental action within the state and national district. These National Park Service Guidelines can also be used as just that, guidelines when dealing with properties. But they're not required to be used in this circumstance of this application. The fact that a property may be eligible for designation is not relevant to this application and is not a standard by which to assess the application to relocate 91 Prospect or the demolition of 110 to 116 Prospect. It would be inappropriate to deny any property owners the ability to use a property just because it may be eligible and was considered 30 years ago. As Meredith said, Princeton University would support a to initiate a conversation with the State Historic Preservation Office to to consider a relocation of the boundary around 91 Prospect so that it could continue to be included in the boundary of the of the district as as it was relocated to the north side of the street. So let me say finally about that although there's no historic preservation regulatory review over this project, I just wanted to reiterate that we take again seriously our responsibility as stewards of historic properties. We also know that cities and campuses require thoughtful work to manage change. As noted in our preservation, we have enormous respect for the principles and values of historic preservation. Yet we're knowledgeable and realistic about the evolution of cities and campuses. Not every building can be preserved. They require thoughtful work to manage this kind of change. As we showed earlier, just over the past 20 years, we've preserved, adapted and restored over 80 projects on the campus and in the neighboring community. The project we have presented is determined by the functional requirements of the program. And it advances the mission of the institution and literally it serves in the service of humanity. Thank you. We're ready for the next step in the conversation.
Ron, before we we move back, Madam Chair, I'd just like to mark my letter that we posted. I would presented a few days ago and was posted on the the application page. I guess on Monday, it's a memorandum, a legal memorandum from me addressed to Jerry Mueller dated June 15 dash 2021. I want to mark it as Exhibit A. A two?
A two, right.
A two. I'm not going to go through it or read it. I think Ron, Ron McCoy touched upon the points there. Like we said, we we came out of the last meeting and we were very concerned with the blurring and the confusion, and we thought that we needed to make it clear and present a document that would outline what Ronald McCoy just went through, that this is not, this application does not require president preservation plan approval. And the closest regulatory historic overlay, as you can see on that picture, is the green area. So if you take a look at 110, 114 and 116, it's and if you scale it out, it's about 1,800 feet away. So you know, that's what, four or five football fields, depending on if you're including the end zones. That's how close the the that's how far I should say is the regulated district, not where these project, not where this project is. And I think, Madam Chair, I think that's where that's if I don't know if there's any questions.
Wait, Christopher and Madam Chair, I could I have just a couple more minutes? I want to address something that Mr. Place asked us to address in a memo today. He sent an email wanting to make sure that we would we would address some of the comments that he made in his report. So I would say that most of those, the comments I think he asked us to address would apply to the actual application for the CEES and ES project. But it I think in particular, he wanted to have us talk about how this project matches up against the Princeton Community Master Plan for Green Buildings and Environmental Sustainability Element. And I would say that having, you know, reviewing that that element of the master plan, the most specific reference that the plan has is related to green building principles. And it simply calls for reducing and recycling demolition and construction waste. I would say that we will recycle 95% of the demolition and construction waste from this project. I also know that there's some concern that demolishing wood buildings would go against our overall sustainability principles. We've done some calculations of the embodied carbon of the building, and I have a kind of simple way of trying to equate it. It really is, while there is embodied carbon in the building, and yet we would recycle 95% of the waste. Just to put it in perspective. If you look at the current generation of photovoltaics that we are completing on campus, the amount of embodied carbon in this building would be equal to three days of operation of that photovoltaic array system. Now, we have 25 years to go before that photovoltaic array system helps us achieve carbon neutrality. And over those 25 years, the embodied carbon in these buildings would be three one thousandths of the energy that would produce by that photovoltaic array. So while it's isolated and it is, it is a loss of carbon, it is a recycled building, 95% would be recycled. But we we look at things from campus perspective and campus systems and overall overall perspective. And I'd say that while while that loss of carbon would is unfortunate, it is de minimis in our goal to to achieve carbon neutrality in in 25 years from now. I'd say that in in general, and I can go through any details that Mr. Place wants me to go through. The this building, but really the environmental studies and CEES project, I think, aligns point by point with the values and goals and vision that are identified in the Princeton Community Master Plan, Green Building and Environmental Sustainability Element.
Yeah, in many.
Madam Chair?
Michael.
I'd like to thank the university architect for responding to my memo. I appreciate that. As he knows, and probably most people know that are engaged in this meeting, municipal land use staff is very concerned about the master plan being well represented and reflected upon. And the green building and environmental sustainability element is our newest element. And it's something that was very important to the community. So I appreciate you addressing that. I agree that the new construction, which is really the lion's share, the the vast, the largest part of what's proposed in this new complex for environmental studies and and the School of Engineering seems to be a very sensitive design, you know, moving forward in terms of environmental concerns. My basic concern for raising that point was that I think we can all agree that in terms of construction, the greenest type of building construction is a building that already exists. So that's why historic preservation is always an adaptive reuse is always seen as a very green way to move forward in terms of developing and using buildings. So I appreciate you addressing that. One other thing I wanted to comment on, Madam Chair, and the board and the public. The university architect mentioned that it was a suggestion that the so-called Club Royal Historic District should be a designated local district. I really think that's unfair to the master plan. The master plan is an official, public process endorsed by this board. And in that master plan, it states that the proposed Club Row Historic District would be eligible for those local designation. That's really more than a suggestion, and I'm not sure who the architect was even implying suggested it. But I wanted to make clear, it was indeed the master plan that said, yes, the Club Row would be eligible if in fact the property owner was so inclined to work with the community to designate it a locally designated historic district, which I agree completely with the university has not happened to this date. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify that.
I'd be happy to go back to the master plan document because that's where I caught the phrase suggested for consideration.
Yes. So, yes, so so, Michael, we were looking at it right above the Club Row where it talks about, first of all, the master plan goes through and identifies the correct, I mean, the duly adopted and designated historic districts. And then after that, it lists out 57 locations that could be used as suggested districts. And the first, it starts by, excuse me, I'm just finding the page. Oh, it's on page 110. The title is Suggested Historic Sites and Districts. And the language that that it uses says, "The following list compiled by the Borough's Historic Preservation Review Committee and the Township Historic Preservation Committee should be evaluated for nomination on the New Jersey National Register. Based on the results of these evaluation designation as a local historic site district or buffer district should be considered." So we didn't read any of that language to mean that it is, we it, we basically look at that as suggested because it says based on results should be considered. because it says based on results should be considered and should be evaluated for nomination. I'm not sure what you, you know, what you were specifically referencing.
No, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to make clear what the source of that was. When Mr. McCoy mentioned it, he said it was a suggested, but he didn't say who or what was suggesting. And I wanted to make clear that it was the Princeton Community Master Plan. So I'm glad we cleared that up. Thank you.
Okay.
We also, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, we also have, we put together another exhibit that we posted. Well, we didn't post, but we submitted and was posted was a response to the review reports. Michael's report was not included in that that initial post. You have to post it a few days before, and so you lose a little time. You can't post it the day of the hearing. So I'd like to just mark that as exhibit A three. I think the testimony that we provided this evening went through all of the points, but for further clarification on some of the questions that were raised, there's a, there's an explanation there. We can certainly review or discuss or go through those.
Mr. Degrassio, just to be fair, my my memo was dated June fourteenth. It was not submitted yesterday.
Oh, no, no, I was saying I can't submit. I wasn't saying that, Michael. I was just saying we submitted it on Monday. Because we have to get it in three days before. That's all I was saying.
Yes, and the board received those responses also.
Yeah.
I think the same, the same day that you that you submitted them.
Yeah, there were a couple of reports that weren't included, and we're going to address those verbally. That's all.
Yeah, and with consideration, though, to the matter that is of such pressing interest to the public and because critical mass of people have identified experts to represent their views. We certainly understand what the university is saying about regulatory authority and we remain interested in hearing, of course, from from members of the public on on this topic. So I don't want to go through all of the other professional memos with Q and A and whatnot before we get to this question. I see Elizabeth Kim, our Historic Preservation Officer, has is on the call and I can actually see her face instead of just, instead of just your name. It's my understanding that there are folks who Sandy Harrison from Princeton.
Pardon me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Will the, will the, will, will there be an opportunity for staff and board members to ask questions of the people who just testified for the university?
Sure. Do you want? Yes, we can do that before we hear. Yeah, I guess it's. What I didn't want to do is go go into all of the different professionals' reports, which could take quite some time before we get to the public comment that's on the the topic that so many people have such a keen interest in. So why don't we, why don't we have staff and and board questions about the presentation that's just been made? And is that, is that what you were suggesting?
Yes, thank you.
And I think that I think that's right. Sorry. Probably jumped the gun on going to others. Yes, Ms. Kim?
I was wondering if I could take this opportunity to address some of the comments that came from Mr. Degrassio and Mr. McCoy, more specifically about historic preservation, since there are many people from the public here. So I can clarify the letter that Mr. Degrassio presented and also the comments that came from Mr. McCoy. So they had both talked.
Elizabeth, if Elizabeth, if you could raise your right hand, I'm going to swear. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I sworn or affirm. Please state your full name and spell your last name.
Elizabeth Kim, K I M, Princeton Historic Preservation Officer.
Go right ahead.
So the comment that kept on coming up is that that Club Row Historic District is not a designated municipal historic district, and that is absolutely correct. And never in the historic preservation officers' report did it state that. In fact, on the first paragraph on page two, it states that the subject properties along Prospect Avenue lies within the Princeton Community Master Plan Suggested Club Row Historic District. And it states Ninety One Prospect Avenue, which is Club Court, also falls within the New Jersey and National Register Historic Places, Princeton Historic District. Club Court is a contributing building in the Princeton Historic District. So I know that in Mr. Degrassio's letter, he kept on saying that there was reference, that there was confusion, that the public or perhaps people in the HPC thought it was in that there was review because it was in the Princeton Historic District. Well, the Historic Preservation Commission is very knowledgeable of what they review when it's in the local district versus what they don't review, which is in the state and national district. And they know that unless they get funding, if it's private money, they do not review that. But if they have private funding or if there's a federal permit, that that is something they review. So I, and there was never anything else within the report that mentions anything about the Prospect Avenue National Register Historic Districts. The other thing is I'm not sure why there is suggestion that there's blurred information about that. And and I know that the letter also stated that that there should be no design criteria, which was stated within the report, which is typically used for historic district. However, because under the procedure on page two, under the municipal land use law, which was stated in the report, under forty, section fifty D dash one ten, where the application for development referred to Historic Preservation Commission, that the planning board and board of jurisdictions shall refer to Historic Preservation Commission. Every application for development submitted to either Board for Development Historic Zoning Districts or Historic Sites designated on the zoning board official map or identified in a component element of the master plan. And historically, this has been the case. We had two oh three, two oh five Nassau Street, which was in the Anderson Town Historic Recommended Historic District. We had one forty Hodge Road, we had seventy-five Cleveland, and in fact, we had one eighty-five Nassau Street, which is also a university project, which HPC reviewed a couple of months ago. So I guess I'm just wondering. The university was familiar with the recommended district because one eighty-five Nassau fell within that. And there was no discussion about why is HPC reviewing this? So I just want to make it clear that the historic preservation has historically reviewed recommended districts because it is in the municipal land use law as being within the master plan, so they are permitted to review that. And I just don't know, I just, I I'm unclear why they feel that there was a bit of confusion. I don't, I mean, the Historic Preservation Commission is very familiar with they review and recommended districts. They're familiar with what is in the state and national, and they review, they understand what is in the local district. So I just wanted to make that clear. And there was also one other point that was made, which discussed that there was a statement under the review criteria that the commission must decide on supporting or not supporting the application. That is standard language that is placed in the report for recommended historic districts. When it is a designated historic district, that wording actually states must decide on approving or not approving. Because again, in the recommended district, they are doing a courtesy review. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I I could, I think I could address a couple of those. So two things. One is, and and I've stated this position before, I I don't read that section the same way. It where it says that there's, there's nothing that says that if it's listed as an area to be studied or suggested district in a component element of the master plan. It specifically says in historic zoning districts or in historic sites designated on the map or designated in the master plan. That's essentially what it reads. So it it does not say suggested site. So but I'm not even going to argue about that. I don't think that was really the problem. I I have a problem with, you know, I don't necessarily agree that it gives you jurisdiction to review as advisory, but we went through the process. What we did have exception to is indicating that the standard to review is all of the standards under the what would be required as a preservation plan approval and what would be required if you were historic property and if you were in a historic zone. If there was a recognition or a clarification that these standards don't apply to this application because it's not in a historic zone, but we could discuss them as if they were, then I would not have had an objection. But the language was very strong that we should approve or disapprove or whatever you said based on the following criteria, which only apply to preservation and applications. And that's what I was objecting to most.
Okay, I understand. I I believe that the the commission, actually, the report really didn't talk that much about the application as much, but more about actually the history of that street and the eating clubs. And I I think as Mr. Degrassio knows, and I actually could not give a presentation at our HPC meeting because my audio was down, so I wasn't actually able to present the report either. And it basically went from the applicant to the public.
And we were very rushed. I would have had time to call you and talk to you about it beforehand, Elizabeth, but there was just too much going on that day as well.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you both. Are there questions from board members or other staff for Mr. Degrassio, Mr. McCoy, or any of their other experts and professionals? Mr. O'Donnell?
I do. I do have one question. And Mr. McCoy, you kept and on the the map, there was the ledger pulled out saying that state and federal reviews are not applicable applicable because there is no undertaking as defined by, and undertaking was in quotes. Can you just explain to me exactly what undertaking means in this context?
Who are you asking that question to?
Either I suppose either Mr. McCoy, since he was the one who questioned it, or or the applicant's lawyer.
Yeah, it's it's actually spelled out in my report, word for word, defining undertaking. Essentially, it's governmental action. And the the big, very simple picture is when you look at that map, that exhibit, the green area is historic overlay for local review. The orange area was state and federal registered district, right? It's called the Princeton Historic District. If you have governmental action within that orange area, if the state is doing a project, if the county is doing a project, if the local municipality is doing a project, or if the municipality is funding one, that project triggers, because it's an orange area, review under the State Historic Preservation Committee. So you go down to Shippo, it's called, in the, you know, down in Trenton, and you go through a review procedure based on their standards. The government is regulating the governmental action. For local, you look at the green areas because the local municipality regulates their overlay. And that's the difference between the two. And undertaking is the term they use to define what that governmental action is.
And actually, the local municipality actually is more restrictive than the state and national.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from from board members or staff? I'm not seeing any.
I I have some questions, but I'll wait till other board members go.
I'm not seeing any other board members right now. So why don't you go ahead? It might jog people to, you know, pose other questions. Go right.
Sounds good. And I'll try to go quickly. This, these questions are for the Architectural Historian and Preservation Consultant, Miss Bizdak.
Go ahead. She's, she's on.
Great. I was wondering if you were involved in this evaluation, adaptive reuse evaluation of Ninety One Prospect Street? Were you, the architect, the university architect mentioned that this was a very careful evaluation of whether Ninety One Prospect could be used as part of the E S and S E A S complex. Were you involved in that?
I was not involved in the architectural discussions and and the programmatic discussions. No.
So you you didn't make an evaluation based on your professional qualifications, whether this building could be a good candidate for adaptive reuse. You weren't part of that.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. I remember, I believe it was the SBRAB meeting, the Site Plan Review Advisory Board, where you were asked a question about whether the three houses at one ten through one sixteen Prospect Avenue could be contributing elements, would be considered worthy to be contributing elements of a potential district or expansion of a district. Do you recall that? And could you sort of elaborate on that?
I I do recall that. I did say that I thought that they could be contributing elements of a historic district, but that they had never actually been designated as such.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Let's see. Could you talk a little bit about the the Community Master Plan talks about this potential Club Row Historic District? And that implies that the ensemble, the row of the buildings, has a certain importance as much as as the individual elements. With your, from your personal perspective, could you talk a little bit about, you know, why was it singled out as a Club Row? And the ensemble of buildings as they're situated?
Not quite sure what you're looking for with your question. I'm sorry.
I guess this Club Row, to me, sounds like more than one building, and it involves Ninety One Prospect in its current location. Do you have any thoughts about why the row is in its, you know, full extent is important enough to be, you know, suggested, recommended as a as a eligible local district?
Sure. I guess the the short answer to that would be that, at least today, as you see, Prospect Avenue is largely dominated by large-scale masonry eating clubs with a certain commonality in terms of scale, material setback, landscape features, design elements, and that as such, it presents a cohesive picture. And that historically, clubs have been on both sides of the street. So it's, it's actually unfortunate that the that some of that has been lost today, but the 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 overall impression is one of grandeur, of space between buildings. And I think a lot of that has been very well maintained over the years.
Thanks. My last question for you right now is, if you recall at a previous hearing, I asked you a question because you had, you had, I guess, the university representative mentioned that the university would be willing to consider an extension of the historic district once Ninety One Prospect was relocated. And I asked you, would Shippo, with the State Historic Preservation Office, be concerned or not impressed that three buildings that could potentially be contributing buildings in a district were demolished in order to make, create a space for this building to be relocated to? Now, I I thank you because you complimented me that it was a very good question. I was wondering if you've had any time to think about an answer for it?
I think, yeah, I do remember a compliment to you. And I was going to tell you again, I still think it's a good, it's a good question and.
And I'll thank you again.
You're welcome. I did, I did, once upon a time, a long time ago, work for the State Historic Preservation Office. I do know that moved buildings are problematic. But I think that, and I have no idea how the State Preservation Office would react specifically to this case. But I think that they would certainly entertain a conversation and that I know that the university is very serious about their commitment when they've made the statement about working to adjust the boundaries. I think that there is a lot to be discussed about, you know, considerations in terms of moving that building and how it could remain eligible. And I think there are still a lot of positives that would be in its favor. I can't predict how the State Preservation Office ultimately will see that option, but I I do think it's a viable one and one that's very worthy of discussion.
Thank you very much.
I think that I recall that the three buildings the university proposes to demolish the Victorian houses themselves were moved across the street at one point.
In the 20s, 1920s.
I, I wonder if the university has thought at all about moving those houses again so that they can continue to be used as houses and their history is not completely, you know, destroyed? I guess, so I guess that is a question either to Mr. McCoy or Mr. DeGrazia.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll respond to that. I think that unfortunately, that's not a viable prospect. We have either sort of known plans for sites or we have known opportunities for sites, and we wouldn't want to encumber those opportunities by moving these buildings to those sites. They would simply come under the same fate that they, that they are now. They would be in conflict with other development priorities.
What, what about the idea, and Princeton did this once before, quite some time ago, where somebody was going to demolish a building which had some historic significance? It was not an historic district. And basically, they advertised it, and they might have been pushed by public officials to do this, as if somebody wants to take the building and move it to a site. You're welcome, you should let us know, here's the timeframe, et cetera. Is that pie in the sky?
We did that on the Lewis Center for the Arts Project, and Kristen Applegate's office managed that process. And it's extremely expensive to move one of these homes, and there, I think, were enormous number of curious, calls of curiosity, but nobody had the wherewithal and the real commitment to do it. So we, we just think that that's, it's just not a practical option.
Ms. Sax, and then Mr. Quinn.
I just wanted to answer your question, Jerry. I have done some asking about that. And so the answer, I think, is yes, unfortunately, it is pie in the sky.
Okay, thanks, Mia.
Tim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was reference made that there may or may not have been faculty who were luminaries in their field or were, had made historic contributions. And I'd just like to unpack that a little bit and, and see just who lived in, and I'm talking about the three single-family homes now. I think it was sort of, there was a qualified reference to the people who lived there, and I, I'm sure that there, that it's known what faculty members, and any Nobel laureates, for instance? Any key contributors to science? To toss up for either the historian or for Mr. McCoy.
Meredith should handle that one. I would, I would just say that there are probably lots of homes in Princeton that have had somebody important living in them. So, but Meredith can answer the specifics.
But we're talking about these three specific houses.
Right. It was, it was a reference to 114 Prospect. Specifically, it's been discussed that Erwin Panofsky lived there. And there have been other relatively notable historians who have lived there as well. But I have not fully vetted all of that information. I think you may hear about that from members of the public. Eligibility under the criteria B, the National Register, is a particularly thorny question. It's very hard to tie significance of a building to an individual. There are a lot of things you have to prove. I'm not saying it can't be done. But generally, they prefer that it's a building that is, is very strongly related to the person, perhaps where they have accomplished the things that have made them famous. They typically like to steer you away from criteria and be at the State Historic Preservation Office. So it's, while it's very interesting that some notable faculty members have lived in at least 114 Prospect, I think there's a lot of work that would need to be done there to really, to investigate that further and to see specifically what the association with the building was, how long they were there, et cetera.
Thank you. I, I bring it up because this board heard an application on Ewing Street, I believe it was Ewing, where, where it turned out that just about every major literary figure of the 20th century had visited. And it was also a temporary residence of Thomas Jefferson. So I understand from your perspective that who lived there is difficult to ascertain. I, I just, I think it's germane, it's certainly, it's germane to me, I would say. And I suspect if we're going to hear about it from members of the public, it would be nice if it were verified, if what they were saying was verified by the applicant. Because we've, we've heard already that some things that were said at HPC were, are being doubted by the applicant or were called inaccurate by the applicant. So it's difficult for the board to make that sort of judgment. I mean, when, when I hear that Faulkner and Hemingway and, and other, just about Walker Percy and, you know, every major writer of 20th century literature visited or stayed at a house, it's pretty easy, but I'm an English major, so it's easier for me.
I understood, and I think I can say that it's, it's verified that, that there were relatively notable individuals who did live, at least for some period of time, in 114.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members or staff? Mr. Purcell?
Jim, if you could raise your, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do. I have one, I have one, I have one simple question. The underlying reason for 91 Prospect being moved is to make way for a new building. To what extent has the university looked at preserving 91 Prospect and redesigning the building so that it does not need the space at 91 Prospect? With 660,000 square feet, it would seem to me that a reconfiguration of the building should be a viable option.
So, Jim, part of the trick here is that this is sort of like the cart before the horse. The discussion that we had planned to go through, a lot of that is in the exhibit we prepared in the presentation for the ES and SEES project. Ron, would you like to hit some of the points? But we, we had a very in-depth presentation prepared as part of ES and SEES. I think Ron can maybe hit upon some of the points that were looked at and, and, but...
Yeah, I would just simply say that the site is actually extremely tight within all of its, all of its boundaries. And there is no room to, to, to increase the height or width or footprint of the building. It's important to note that the southeast corner of the site is reserved for the future electrical and computing engineering building. So the site just simply doesn't have capacity.
Any other, other questions before we go to presentation and comments from the public?
Then I, I take it, Louise, after that, we'll get back to have our professionals go through the remarks?
Yes.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, could I suggest that this might be a time for us to take a break?
Goodness, yes, I lost track of the time.
Nature is calling.
Check, check on the Brooklyn Nets game, and I hear the Yankees turn to triple play. Seven minutes, I'll see you all back at 9:57. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sax, Mia, are you back? Ms. Capazoli, I see Mr. Chow, good. As soon as Ms. Sax is back, I think that I understand that we will turn first to Sandy Harrison from Princeton Prospect Foundation to kick off public comment, is that correct? I think that's what's been suggested.
I'm under the same impression, I am ready to move, Ms.
Okay. Okay, and Carrie, just for context, okay, Ms. Sax is back. Can you let us know how many people are attending the meeting? How many attendees there are and how many hands? Well, I'll, I'll guess I'll, I'll say now, this is, we are beginning the public comment section of the meeting. And so if you want, if you wish to make a comment, now is the time to raise your hand virtually by clicking on the raise hand icon in the middle of the bottom of your screen. And people will be called on in the order in which hands were raised. But I, I believe I know that we are going to start with Sandy Harrison. And and when it is your time to speak, Carrie will bring you over from being an attendee to being a participant in the meeting. And then Mr. Mueller will swear you in. So that's how it all works. And then you'll need to say your first name, your last name, and spell your last name.
There are 70 members of, 70 members of the public in attendance. We have nine hands raised, but Mr. Harrison, I will promote him now, actually, he will be 10, so.
Okay, thank you.
Oops.
Am I on?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you Chair Wilson and Planning Board, and good evening Princeton community.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand?
Oh, sure.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So, so please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Sandy Harrison, H-A-R-R-I-S-O-N.
Thank you.
Okay, and I am the, I'm an alumnus of the university and also the board chair of Princeton Prospect Foundation. And I have some prepared remarks, they won't be too long. The primary role of the Princeton Prospect Foundation, which is a charitable organization, is to facilitate the prepared, the preservation and restoration of this historically and architecturally significant buildings owned and occupied by Princeton University's iconic eating clubs, including the landscape along Prospect Avenue, and to educate the general public about the special history and architecture of these buildings, as well as those which are fully intact but no longer operating as eating clubs. To this end, Princeton Prospect Foundation is profoundly concerned about one particular aspect of the university's otherwise exciting and impressive Planned Environmental Studies, Engineering, and Applied Science Building Complex. Specifically, they propose moving of the former court clubhouse across Prospect Avenue and out of the Princeton Historic District, and demolishing three historically significant houses, including a former eating club, to make room for it. Such a plan, in our view, would substantially diminish the aesthetic and historic continuity of Prospect Avenue, and it would set a disturbing precedent for the potential future moving and/or demolition of other historic eating clubhouse and buildings by establishing a beachhead on Prospect Avenue. Further, the university has not provided, in our opinion, any compelling reason for this plan, which would harm the public interest. The foundation also believes that the university can fully achieve its functional objectives for the new building complex without uprooting this portion of Prospect Avenue because there is adjacent university-owned land that instead can be used for what amounts to be only a very small portion of the entire project. Further, while the university contends that it is not legally bound by National Park Service guidelines, that does not mean that the important principles of this public policy should be ignored. It should be noted that Princeton Prospect Foundation's concerns are supported by the alumni leadership of the 11 active eating clubs, all but one of which comprise the most historic part of Prospect Avenue. It also should be noted that I, along with Clifford Zink, an historic preservation consultant, author, and longtime town resident, and Carl Pettit, an alumnus, architect, and Princeton native, have worked since early last fall to try to convince the university to develop a plan that will not denigrate the Princeton Historic District and Prospect Avenue neighborhood. It has been only in the past three weeks that this pressing issue has come to the full public's attention, with resulting enormous concern expressed among town residents and others, as evidenced by 1,000 signatures as of just a few moments ago to a town resident-led community petition in opposition to the proposed moving of the court clubhouse and simultaneous destruction of three historic Victorian-era houses. Lead stories on this issue also have been published in local media, along with many letters to the editor and other comments from concerned citizens. In 2017, Princeton Prospect Foundation engaged Clifford Zink to document the history of the eating clubs for the National Register of Historic Places and to prepare a groundbreaking book on them with a special emphasis on their distinguished architecture and on the architects who designed them. The popularity of this book, as well as foundation-sponsored public tours and open houses of the eating clubs, demonstrates the considerable strength of community interest in the unique history and architecture embedded in the special buildings along Prospect Avenue. Clifford would like in a moment to make a presentation that supports the efforts of Princeton Prospect Foundation and others in opposing the university's unnecessary and ill-conceived plan, which would irreparably damage Prospect Avenue's unique historic character. Thank you, Planning Board and staff, for your thoughtful consideration of this very important preservation matter. Princeton Prospect Foundation urges you to deny the university's E3 Zone variance application and recommend to the university that it redesign its plan for the small Prospect Avenue portion of its vast project so that such plan respects historic preservation policy and is not detrimental to the public.
I would just admonish the board not to consider the one sentence Mr. Harrison stated about a petition with over 1,000 signatures. Petitions cannot be considered by the board, the number of people in petition cannot be considered.
Thank you, Jerry, I was just about to say, request that, appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mueller. So Mr. Harrison is Mr., I believe Mr. Zink, you were referencing Mr. Zink? Is Mr. Zink, have his hand up, Carrie?
Justin must be moving him over now, I was just about to.
Okay. To Mr. Zink, that we are, are giving some extra time, you know, beyond the, the three minutes since he is engaged so many residents to represent her.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Zink, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I, I do.
So just want to affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Clifford Zink, Z-I-N-K. I live on Aiken Avenue, not far from the site in question. I have a master's degree in historic preservation. from Columbia University, and I've been a practicing architectural historian and preservationist for thirty-six years. In the remarks by the university, there were some comments to impugn my testimony and also to malign the findings of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I will address some of those as I go through my presentation. In no way did any of us or anybody at the commission, as has been alleged, in no way did any of us say that there was definite regulatory control over these properties. So that's an effort to try and undermine presentation by a member of the public and also the Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. Wilson, can I share my screen?
Yes, I believe either Carrie or Justin needs to give you that.
Everybody has permission.
Okay, so yes, you do, go right ahead.
Okay. Now, I'm just looking, here we go, let's see if this is it, here we go.
Why don't we mark this as Exhibit 01?
So wait, Jerry, this was not on the website or provided before he? Mr. Zink's presentation that was there, and I don't know if it's even there now, was the one at HPC.
Sorry, say again.
What, the screen that I just saw, unless he was, that was just a screen, he was going to move out of the way, was not the presentation that was submitted.
Okay, I mean, I think he's entitled to make a presentation to the board, and if he has some written documentation that he's going to testify about, I think he's entitled to do so, and basically to have that marked.
Okay, and just for the record, though, it was never provided or posted online.
Okay. And maybe Mr. Zink can address that.
Well, we did provide the presentation, we've made some adjustments since we provided it, just like the university has made some adjustments. And, but it was removed, because we were told that it couldn't be provided prior to actually giving it.
And that's correct.
It was available for a while.
Yeah, right.
So.
I'm sorry, Jerry, can you explain that? It was removed because it couldn't be put on site as I thought that, under your regulations, it has to be in twenty-four hours beforehand.
Well, that would be with respect to the applicant or any attorney representing objectors, but for individual objectors, at least the position I've taken, is if they have written material, the only way it could be presented to the board is by them testifying at the hearing, and they could offer it as long as they're explaining what that written material is and basically describe it.
Okay, I have read that provision to mean that they have to post it, make it available, and then at the night of the hearing, they could qualify, and they have it marked in, but it does need to be available. But, you know, my note, my objection is noted for the record.
Yes, right.
So.
Go right ahead, Mr. Zink.
Thank you. So the university has expressed its stewardship eighty buildings over the last twenty years, and as someone said to me, what else would one expect from a, you know, internationally prominent university that dates back to seventeen forty-six, that it would, that it would take care of its historic buildings? There has been a lot of laudable stewardship of historic buildings, and what we have here with this application is in total stark contrast to what the university has done elsewhere. And in our, my presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission, I never use the word National Park Service Regulations, I always use the word guidelines, because everybody at the meeting, including me, knows that these regulations are not imposed on this particular application, because there's no federal undertaking. If the university was or is using any federal funds in the in the development, that would trigger a Section 106 review, which would apply the regulations. So it's not just a government undertaking, it's also government funding. So, the the bottom line is that the proposed project will be detrimental to the public interest, violates the Park Service Guidelines, violates the Community Master Plan, and as Sandy said, sets a damaging precedent. So, here's the National Park Service original submission in nineteen seventy-six, and here's what we did in twenty seventeen. There was some testimony by the university to imply that we left out the three historic buildings on 114, 110, and 116 Prospect, and therefore that seems to indicate that they weren't important enough. Well, that couldn't be further from the case. The focus of this project was on the sixteen clubhouse that served for, for eating clubs for several decades. The, only one of the three buildings actually served as an eating club on the other side of Prospect, and it was only one for probably about, I think, nineteen oh four to nineteen twenty-eight. And so we deemed that that was not significant to feature in the book. It is noted in the book, and there's a photograph of it, that it was a previous eating club. So, National Register District, Ron, Mr. McCoy showed several documents that, that the building, the court clubhouse is in the district. So, let's look at the ways that the university's plan violates National Park Service Guidelines. The significance of properties is embedded in their sites and settings, and as well as the structures. By moving the building, the university's plan will diminish court clubs' significance, taking it out of its original site. Moving an historic building unavoidably destroys some of the historic fabric and lessens the historic integrity of the building, because it's no longer on its original site, which the university's plan will do. Properties listed in the National Register should be moved only when there is no feasible alternative. Sandy Harrison pointed out that the university hasn't really fully demonstrated that there's no feasible alternative. Moving of historic structures can create a false sense of historical development, which the university's plan will definitely do. For more, the proposed location does not, the proposed relocation site for a moved building should not possess historical significance that would be adversely affected by the intrusion of the structure, which the university's plan will do by demolishing the three houses. If a structure holds a permanent position in the middle of an historic district or a street that presents a unified appearance, its removal might leave an awkward gap or destroy the rhythmic harmony of the street or neighborhood, which the university's plan will do. When a property is moved, every effort should be made to establish its historic orientation, immediate setting, general environment, which the university's plan cannot do, because it's moving it across the street and rotating it one hundred and eighty degrees. In the event that a structure is moved without National Park Service approval, deletion from the National Register will be automatic, which the university's plan will cause to happen. There was some, there was some note by the university that they would be willing to explore the, the extension of the boundary of the National Register District to include a relocated court club. Well, what do we think the National Park Service is going to say about that? Not only does this project have to go through SHIP-O review, the State Historic Preservation Office, but then it has to go to the National, National Park Service. And how do we think they would respond to extending the boundary after eight of its guidelines have been violated? The, these are additional violations of new construction within the boundaries of an historic district. New construction needs to protect the integrity of the historic buildings and the sites, property setting should be away from the side of historic buildings, must avoid obscuring, damaging, or destroying character-defining features. The university's plan does not do that. Related new construction, including landscaping, must not alter the historic character of a property, which the university's plan will do with its landscaping in front of its proposed pavilion. In properties with multiple historic buildings, the historic relationship between buildings must be protected. Contributing historic buildings within an historic district must not be isolated from one another by the insertion of new construction. In addition to court club, there are also additional houses that, as the National Register District continues all the way down to to Fitz Randolph, and they would be isolated from, from the other components of the district. So here we are, looking at ninety-one Prospect on the left, and in the middle of the picture is the former Key and Seal Club, and on the right is Charter Club. So look at this historic streetscape. And we won't see any slide from the university showing a view like this, because the introduction of the new building it's proposing, which is a perfectly attractive building in the right place. The introduction of it here would be a jarring, jarringly discordant with the historic district. What kind of message does it send to violate these National Park Service Guidelines? What kind of message? That national preservation policy doesn't matter. What kind of message does it send to university students and high school students? Don't worry about these national standards for protecting buildings and sites important to our nation's history. That's been certified by the fact that these buildings are part of a National Register District. But the university is saying, don't worry about that, just ignore them. What kind of message does that send to students and to the general public and to other other districts and other people who want to develop in historic districts? This is a university map. All the property in green is university-owned land. These are the privately-owned eating clubs here, and one over there. This is a privately-operating eating club colonial that rents the building from the university. And so the other eating clubs that the university owns include Campus, Bendheim is in Dial Lodge, this is the former Elm Club, here's the Key and Seal, and here's the current Court Club. And here is another building that's in the National Register District, this is a house that the university owns. So, you know, really, there wouldn't be anything preventing the university from coming along and saying, well, we have to move this house now, because we're going to expand our program on Prospect, and so we can get rid of this house. Over here, we see the green buildings, and here is the buffer zone. I may not have this line in exactly the right place, it might be vertical, but the bottom line is, it, as the university has shown, it shows this two hundred and fifty-foot buffer. Over here, you can see the green backing here, these are houses on Murray Place. Of the seventeen houses on Murray Place, between Prospect Avenue and Nassau Street, of the seventeen, the university owns ten of them. And the anecdotal word on the street is that whenever one comes for sale, the university buys it. So, so, you know, moving, moving buildings, destroying buildings that have local significance, local history, even if they've not been designated yet. You know, this project opens up the floodgates, it's a beachhead, as Sandy said, for the university coming along in the future. When the university says at public meetings, we have no plans for that site, everybody knows that the university has such a long timeline that ten, twenty, thirty years, you know, there will be plans to do something with that particular site. The university's current hard line really contrasts with previous examples where there was controversial development that the university wanted to do. And what, what what resolved the issue was university-town-community cooperation. This was the EQUAD expansion in two thousand and five, which caused a lot of controversy because of its impact on the houses on Murray Place. And you can see very quickly, I think these, these two are pretty close in terms of, I think they were both in the fall. And you see, the university hopes to move forward with an EQUAD proposal compromise. So it sat down with the community and with the town, and it worked out something to fulfill its needs. It wanted to build one hundred thousand square feet of additional space on the EQUAD. But it also met with the neighbors and worked out something that would be satisfactory. And here's a memo from Bob Durkey, or part of a memo, and dated November fourth, two thousand and five, he was the Vice President and Secretary of the university at the time. And this is to the EQUAD neighbors, I want to begin by thanking all of you who have participated in discussions over these past six months about the university's request to amend the zoning variance for an additional one hundred thousand square feet. Then he identifies public meetings, he identifies meetings with a group of neighborhood selected representatives, meetings with the Borough Council and Planning Board. And, and then it goes on. A little further down the page, one outcome of these discussions is a proposed ordinance that now includes many provisions proposed by the neighbors. In addition to the provisions developed in earlier negotiations between the university and officials representing the Borough Council and the Planning Board, these additional provisions incorporate into the ordinance a number of undertakings about the long-term future of the EQUAD site that we will fully support and endorse. And here it is, here is the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer. There is to be no new construction of any new buildings, building or buildings within the existing ordinances, two hundred and fifty-foot setback from the property lines behind the residences on Murray Place. So here, number one, we have an example of the university cooperating with the town and the neighborhood, and coming up with a resolution so it could build the one hundred thousand square feet of, that it required, without harming the public interest by encroaching on other properties. And, and then here, only sixteen years later, the university says, well, forget the, the two hundred and fifty-foot setback that we agreed to, there is to be no construction of any new building. Now we want to put a building into that two hundred and fifty-foot setback. So, again, you know, establishing a beachhead that the university can build on later. Here's another example of university-town-community cooperation. William Street, nineteen seventy-seven, I was living, actually, in Lawrence Township at the time, but I remember this. And the Princeton Housing Group charged or objected to the university demolishing these houses when it wanted to expand the Frick Laboratory. And there was a big public upset about it, the Historical Society of Princeton got involved, and there were multiple meetings, and eventually, an agreement was hammered out. The university approves the Biochem Complex, and the university, or excuse me, the municipality approves it, and the university agreed to move William Street Houses. Now, you may not have noticed, but this took place in lightning speed. See this date here, February tenth? Here it is. March third, an agreement was hammered out in three weeks with the university and the town, so that it could Uh, with the university and the town so that it could proceed. Uh, so here's an example of cooperation. Um, and then of course, a couple of months later. Um, there started to be talk about preserving the town's physical heritage. By creating a landmark ordinance and that what, that's what led to the creation of the historic preservation commission. So here we have the site that we've already seen this photograph before. And uh, there's the university vacant land to the uh, to the east of the court clubhouse, a big lot. And there's a photo of the vacant land up on the upper left. So you know, the university. Said that uh, in order to meet its programmatic requirements, it had to build up here. And it has a vacant lot on the other, right next to it. And further down, I'll show in a minute, it has a other land that. It's leaving open in this. E S S E A S development. Not the parcel that Ron referred to as targeted for another, uh, another building in the future. Uh, you know, make no mistake about it. If the university had said to its architects, we want a distinctive. Noticeable. Entrance from. Prospect Avenue. To connect Prospect Avenue to our new development, but we are going to respect the historic district. And we're going to respect court clubhouse and adaptively reuse it. And. Don't, don't hesitate for a minute to think that the architects would not have said, okay, we will find a way. We will respect the historic district and we will work out the plan so that you have the programmatic requirements. And with the vacant lot, the university could actually build a small building. And if it's designed appropriately to fit into the historic district, everybody would welcome it. So the university has viable options here that haven't been fully explored. And as, um, as Michael Laplace. Uh, when he spoke to the university's preservation consultant. And asked if she was involved in the discussions about courthouse, the answer was no. And in the beginning, the programmatic discussions, and so the university only uh. Started to really think seriously about preservation. Uh, in fact, the original master plan simply shows court clubhouse demolished. I believe it probably only started thinking seriously about this when Sandy Harrison and I and Carl Pettit. Uh, started reaching out to the university in October, raising issues and trying to see if there could be something negotiated to. Maintain the significance of the historic district. So here we are. When you, when you look at this map, you can easily see how intrusive the, uh, the, the building and the landscaping. Or at least the landscaping here would be in the historic district instead of lawns going all the way across those broad lawns that we see. Uh, and you know, the university's landscape architect is very highly respected and uh, but you know, to propose this grid of trees. And a gravel, uh, you know, instead of grass, it's going to be a grid of trees and gravel. Uh, in front of the building. It doesn't blend seamlessly into the campus, current campus. Which was one of the university's stated goals in its nineteen, in this twenty eighteen master plan that it's, that it distributed.
So.
Mr. Mr. Sync, I'm so sorry to interrupt. We're coming up on twenty minutes and um, I just want to.
I'll go.
If you, if you can wrap up, you know, in the next just couple of minutes, we have eleven people who wish to speak and.
Thank you. I will wrap up. So what, you know, the, the university originally gave this. Uh, drawing out, now you're going to see some very much more attractive drawings, but as I said, you won't see one that shows it in the whole district. So what does it mean when, uh, when you introduce this into an historic district that it doesn't matter? What does it mean to young architects to see this and to think that, forget about context? Forget about a start context. You can just introduce whatever you want in the stark district. So this is about the HPC report, talks about the development of the district. A lot of this is in the uh. Uh, in the HPC document. That was presented, uh, the memorandum. Here is the nineteen ninety three proposed boundaries down here for the historic district. And the boundaries you can see here go around the outside. So they definitely were going to include these three buildings. All the yellow buildings are owned by the university. Um, so court club or club row historic district, we talked about this buildings on both sides. The plan violates the community master plan. Here's where these three houses were originally located. Here's one ten prospect. This is olden avenue over here. Here's the current. Uh, charter club. Here's one fourteen and here's one sixteen. These houses predate every one of the buildings in this photograph, except for the possibility of Tiger Inn, which is the oldest existing. Major clubhouse. And uh, in fact, it's the oldest existing clubhouse and. Uh, so here's where they were, part of the visual history. Uh, this is one ten prospect. Uh. Tim Quinn raised the question about who lived there. We just barely started to scratch the surface. This man, Professor Strunk was very high, highly influential musicologist. Erwin Panofsky. Most influential art historian of the twentieth century, according to the reference below, wrote his landmark book here, studies and iconology. Uh, in this house, Mark one professor of art history, Thomas Kaufman lived for ten years. Issued some very important publications. Anthony Vidler was head of history and theory of architecture at the school of architecture. We've barely begun to scratch the surface, you know, were any of these houses. Uh, associated with this, these folks for, you know, decades, probably not. But the fact that the houses hosted a number of very important. Uh, faculty is part of their history that will be lost when the physical buildings are gone. So. This restates some of the information I already said. Uh, most important is public, Prospect Avenue is a public street unlike Ivy Lane and Western Way, which is uni, university owned. And down here, the university has presented no compelling reason to justify the harm. It gave us a bunch of soft reasons why it needs to do this, but it never identified one that's really essential to justify this harm. So it was unanimous consensus of the HPC to recommend to the planning board to deny this. And it said to encourage the university to reevaluate, reevaluate available land. Revisit integrating court clubhouse. Select a better sighting. Preserve the historic district. This is what the HP, HPC commission is recommending. And this is basically what we are recommending. We recommend that this planning board members reject the university's e-zone variance plan. Because of the detrimental harm to the public by establishing a precedent here for further denigration of historic districts. And we suggest that the planning board ask the university to design an appropriate entrance to its new facility. That will respect National Park Service policy, keep court club in place, preserve the three houses and maintain. The unique character and significance of Prospect Avenue. Thank you very much for the, for the opportunity to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Sync.
Okay, the next person who will be moved over is Mr. Kinsey.
Hi, Mr. Kinsey. Uh, can you unmute yourself, please? And before Mr. Muller swears you in, can you give us a sense of how much time you need?
Fifteen minutes.
Can you do it in ten?
I will do, I will do my best.
I appreciate that. Mr. Muller, go ahead.
David, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give up be the truth?
Yes.
Just want to affirm, please tell your full name and spell your last name.
My name is David Kinsey, K I N S E Y. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and Member of the Board. I'm a planner. I have lived on Aiken Avenue for the past thirty five years. I'm a graduate alumnus of Princeton University, including a degree in planning. As a neighbor to the engineering quadrangle, I participated in nineteen ninety in the advocacy that led to the adoption that year of the. E three zone district applicable to the applicants pending minor site plan application. Importantly, it's this zone that requires a two hundred and fifty feet buffer. Between the R two residential zone on the west side of Murray place with its residential structures and any new construction in the E three zone. I'm a licensed professional planner and I have thirty five years of experience as a planning consultant. I have been accepted as an expert in planning by trial courts and local boards throughout New Jersey. I'm a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners. And I have taught planning and public policy at the university as a visiting lecturer since nineteen ninety eight. My comments focus on the variants requested by the applicant to violate the two hundred and fifty foot buffer required in the E three zone. Overall, I support the overall project, but it's the integrity of historic Prospect Avenue that is threatened by the very small component of the massive project. Uh, as has been explained. Uh, in considerable detail, the university seeks to demolish the three remaining Victorian Queen Anne houses on the north side. And in their place relocate the former court club building, a continuing structure in the state national registers Princeton historic district. The purpose of this activity is to permit creation of a vehicular bicycle and pedestrian gateway to the new complex and a tourist pavilion. But all three buildings. Proposed demolition quote were moved to these sites after. Club use elsewhere on the street and are part of the district's visual and institutional history, close quote. According to analysis previously cited, prepared for the former Borough Historic Preservation Review Committee. At the HPC meeting, its vice chair, David Schur commented, quote, the houses have a lot of history. And I'm sorry that the university consultant missed that history. Those houses are indeed significant. They aren't just throwaway buildings. The proposed site for relocating court club is squarely within this two hundred and feet buffer. Uh, where the E's three zone district since nineteen ninety has prohibited, quote, uses other than parks, playgrounds and open parking. It's for that reason, the applicant seeks a so-called C two variance as part of the minor site plan approval under the municipal land use law. To approve the variance, uh, the planning board must make five findings under the law. In my opinion, the applicant is not entitled to the requested belief. As the board cannot make four of the five required findings, as I will now detail, finding by required finding. First, the application must relate to a specific piece of property. This finding can be made. It relates to a fourteen acre parcel that's dominated by the equal. Second, the board must find that the quote purposes of this act, that's the municipal land use law. Would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning requirements, close quote. The municipal land use law has seventeen purposes. In my opinion, one critical purpose is not advanced by the proposed court club relocation. Quote, to promote the conservation of historic sites and districts, close quote. That's one of the purposes. The proposed demolition of these three historic buildings is the antithesis of conservation of historic sites and districts. The proposed removal of a historic court club structure out of its original site and context. Is explicitly discouraged by federal historic preservation policy. Uh, as you've heard, according to National Park Service, properties of the national register should be moved only where there's no feasible alternative for preservation. Now, the applicant has not, in my opinion, demonstrated that preservation of court club is not feasible. In my opinion, the board cannot find that moving court club promotes, quote, conservation of historic sites and districts, close quote. And advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. Third, the board must find that, quote, the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. The applicant does not identify specifically any benefits associated with the requested variance in its barely two-page variance application rider. Instead, the applicant claims it is, quote, improving the current conditions and existing non-conformity, close quote. I disagree. Demolishing three historic structures is not improving the current conditions. The applicant speculates that the intent of two hundred and fifty feet buffer requirement, quote. Was to reduce the impact of more intense uses on neighboring sites, close quote. I disagree. The intent was more than reducing impacts. It was to separate physically any new non-residential buildings in the E three zone. By the substantial distance of two hundred and fifty feet from any zoning district not separated from the E three zone by a public street. In establishing this buffer requirement. The then borough council was well aware that some uses other than permitted parks, playgrounds and open parking were then located in this buffer. Specifically, the three houses at one ten, one fourteen and one sixteen Prospect Avenue. As well as Ivan Lyman Hall and part of the equal. And they were implicitly grandparented as non-conforming uses. The applicant. Notes that the existing building at one sixteen Prospect Avenue is only eleven feet from the neighboring R three zoning district and that the relocated. Court club building would be a hundred and five feet from the R three zone. Which the applicant touts as, quote, improving current conditions, close quote. Again, I disagree. Demolishing these three historic structures is not an improvement. Uh, the applicant notes that it currently owns the adjacent residential building, but that is irrelevant under the municipal land use law, which governs the use of land regardless of its ownership. The applicant claims any detrimental impact on its neighboring prospect apartments, quote, is not a concern, close quote, claiming. The intensity of the prospect apartments, quote, far overshadows the intensity of the relocated building, close quote. But again, that comparison is irrelevant to the requirements in this buffer zone. The applicant also does not identify any possible detriment associated with the application. Black's Law Dictionary defines detriment as, quote, any loss or harm suffered in purpose. And to be in person or property, close quote. Demolishing three historic houses and in their place relocating the former court club is obviously a loss or harm that would be suffered. By the historic district and these historic properties, as well as an irreplaceable loss to the historical character of Prospect Avenue. The applicant asserts in its application, without any evidence, analysis, facts or rationale, that, quote, the benefits associated with the grant of the variances. Substantially outweigh any detriment associated therewith, close quote. The applicant offers only a net opinion, a conclusion without any supporting proofs. The applicant offers no expert report by a licensed professional planner, concurring with its assertions and claimed entitlement to a variance. It is the applicant's responsibility to provide evidence to the board to support the requested variance. The applicant has not done this. Finally, on this point, the law requires that the board find that the benefits, quote, substantially outweigh any detriment, close quote. The applicant has not identified any bit benefits, let alone any that outweigh at all, and certainly not substantially the detriments I have identified. The applicant will unquestionably benefit from the requested variance. But there's no evidence that the community will benefit as required by law, if the variance is granted. Fourth. The board must find that the variance, quote, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, close quote. Here too, the applicant has provided only a net opinion, asserting without evidence, analysis, facts or rationale. That, quote, the benefits associated with the grant of the variances outweigh any detriment associated therewith, close quote. The public good in the context of this application includes, in my opinion. The public good in the context of this application includes, in my opinion, the visual experience of the historic Prospect Avenue streetscape provided without a fee or cost to all members of society along this public street, including the Princeton community and visitor to the campus and community, and links with the past as exemplified by the recognition on the national and state registers. The proposed demolition of the three historic buildings, removal from historic district of a contributing historic building, and the ensuing construction of a modernist campus gateway and academic building would damage the architectural landscape and streetscape character of the neighborhood and would, in my opinion, unquestionably be a substantial detriment to the public good. Fifth, the board must find that the variance, quote, "will not substantially impair the intent and the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance," close quote. Here too, the applicant has provided only a net opinion asserting without evidence, analysis, facts, or rationale, quote, "the granting of the variances will not substantially impair the intent and the purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance," close quote. In the context of variances, the New Jersey Supreme Court has interpreted the, quote, "zone plan," close quote, to mean the municipal master plan. The Princeton Community Master Plan is replete with provisions on land use and historic preservation applicable to the requested variance. Two of the master plans adopted land use goals are on point. Nine, quote, "encourage historic preservation through land use policies which support the preservation of historic buildings and sites," close quote. And ten, quote, "preserve and protect the character of established neighborhoods," close quote. The historic preservation element of the master plan, as Mr. La Place cited, specifically recommends designation of the Club Row Historic District as a local historic district. In my opinion, whether a recommended local historic district has been locally adopted and designated is immaterial to discerning the intent and purpose of the master plan for the purpose of a variance analysis. The intent of the master plan is clear. The historic architecture of Prospect Avenue and the character of the neighborhood should be preserved and protected. The applicant's proposal would impair substantially this clear intent of the master plan. The purpose section of the zoning ordinance applicable in the former borough provides ten specific policies to be implemented through zoning. Two of the policies are directly applicable to the present application. Quote, friends little A, "to protect and preserve the character of the borough as primarily a residential and college town, and to provide for reasonable and necessary adjustments to present-day social and economic trends," close quote. And friends little J, "to preserve and enhance the historic architecture of the community," close quote. Adoption of the E-three zone with its required buffer is an example of reasonable and necessary adjustments that contributed to protecting and preserving the character of the former borough as primarily a residential and college town. The applicant's requested variance from this long-established buffer would, in my opinion, impair substantially this purpose of the zone plan. It is self-evident that the applicant's proposed demolition of the three historic buildings and removal of the historic Court Club from its historic district impair substantially the zoning ordinance's purpose, quote, "to preserve and enhance the historic architecture of the community," close quote. Consequently, in my opinion, the applicant has not provided evidence of its entitlement to the requested variance, and the board cannot make four of the findings required by law to grant the variance. I recommend that the board delay the variance application this evening. One final note. It is neither my responsibility nor that of the board to advise the applicant how to revise its plan to conform to the zoning ordinance and intent of the master plan. However, as several members of the public commented at the HPC meeting and as planning director La Place's memorandum spells out as well, the university could have directed and could still direct its architects to design this gateway area in a manner that preserves the former Court Club building at its century-old location with an adaptive use and perhaps expansion to support the program for the ES plus Cs project. From my own personal experience, I can vouch that the university knows how to transform former eating clubs into excellent research facilities. In the nineteen seventies, I wrote my Princeton dissertation in the former dining room of the former Elm Club at Prospect Avenue and Olden Street that was then used by the School of Public and International Affairs. The building has since been successfully transformed by renovation and addition into the university's Carl Field Center for Equality and Cultural Understanding. The same preservation and transformation can take place at Ninety-One Prospect Avenue with the historic former Court Club building. Thank you. I'll be pleased to answer your questions, and I'll be submitting my full text with the footnotes for the various laws that I cited.
Let's mark that as oh-two.
Thank you, Mr. Kinsey. Carrie, can you tell us who are the next two people
That was excellent.
from the public who will be
I didn't time myself.
for comment, and I would just say now that we're going into the public comment part of the meeting where people are limited to three minutes, please.
The next two
I also want to note, I'm sorry, that we're coming up on eleven. And we have, I think, at least, is it ten more people who wish to speak?
Yes.
Before expressing my own personal opinion, I would ask board members how you feel about hearing all public comment related to the historic preservation matters tonight. It could be an additional thirty to thirty-five minutes.
Well, I guess in addition to that, then we have questions by university to the extent they have any of any of the members
Correct, so
and by the board and the board professionals.
Yes, I guess what I'm proposing is that we get through public comment related to this topic, but not foreclose all as there will be other there may be, you know, questions related to other matters, engineering, et cetera. Does that make sense, Mr. Mueller? I mean, I
Yeah, although to tell you the truth, the bifurcation between preservation-related issues for Ninety-One Prospect and other issues, I'm not sure they're really
Yeah, yeah, no, I
any other issues.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that myself. Yes?
Oh, I'll just say, I think even if there are just ten hands raised now, I think we know that that ten hands elicits usually ten more, which elicit ten more. I think, I think we have at least another full evening on this. So it would be my inclination to, I mean, we've absorbed a lot tonight, but anyway, I, I, I think we had a policy that if we were near to the end of a subject of, and near to a vote, we would try to end at eleven, but if we were midway, we would, you know, continue it. That would be my instinct, but I'm based on the policy that we established, but I'm I'll defer to the other members of the board.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tend to agree with Councilwoman Sacks on this. I think members of the public deserve to be heard when members of the board are on their best, and I think we're approaching at the hour of fatigue, at least personally I am. I would, I think, again, I've raised this in the past, but I think that this really brings to brings to the fore our need to begin our meetings earlier than seven-thirty. I think we're alone, maybe when I was on council, the Environmental Commission met at seven-thirty. Anyway, I mean, those are, talk about bifurcating, I'm trifurcating now. But I would tend to agree with Ms. Sacks, and I think it's to the benefit of members of the public that the board fully hear them with as fresh ears as are given to the applicant and to the expert objectors. I think I took more than three minutes for
That, that point is really well taken. I just feel so bad about people having listened all night and then not get a chance to talk, but Mr. McGowan?
Well, I think I can concur my, my two colleagues. But I gotta say, the other part of this is, I have a feeling making a decision here is going to affect the decision we're going to have to make in the other part of this application. And I don't know, we may want to hear everything before and then, and then decide how we want to vote, vote on this. I mean, what I'm thinking is if we vote not to allow Ninety-One to move, then it seems that we've already made, and we've already kind of made a decision what's going to happen with the other, with the other three properties. At least, by the way, that the university's presented this. Well, I don't want to get into a long discussion.
I mean, I don't
What, what, again, what I think, though, is this is going to take a lot longer than, than, than this is going to be at least another hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, and if I, if I could be heard for a second on this. Mr. DeGresio said right at the beginning that if this application is not going to, is not approved, they're simply going to demolish the Court Club house and proceed with the, with the development of ESCs, assuming that that gets approved. So we should keep that in mind, and unfortunately, there's no rule that bars them from demolishing the building because it's not in historic district or historic buffer district. I, one other thing to keep in mind now, Elizabeth Kim said this, and so did I think Mr. Zink, that they're not suggesting that the board has regulatory power here. But that's not to say that we can't hear all this information, which I think is very valuable about preservation, because certainly at the very least, we have the power not to require them to do X, Y, and Z, but to engage in a dialogue with the university to see whether they're willing to explore other alternatives that might yield a result that the board thinks is a better one. And that's certainly something that's well worth keeping in mind, for the board to keep in mind. Now, it might be the university at the end of the day says, no, we're not going to do any of that. We're not going to work with you, and Mr. Zink obviously pointed to incidents in the past where there had been compromises. And at that point, our power would be limited, but we certainly have the power to jawbone, which is actually language that the New Jersey Supreme Court has used in opinions in which it had said, you know, you got to follow all the rules, but that's not to say you can't jawbone with developers. You can do that. So I just wanted to mention those things.
Madam Chair, I think the question before the board was whether to continue with public comment tonight or?
Yes, and I'm glad the other things got said as well. And we're already just past eleven o'clock. Guess my I would like to hear from one member of the public who raised her hand even before we started the meeting because she really wanted to speak, and I know that we, staff have already taken a screenshot, so we know the order in which people have raised their hands tonight. We will respectfully ask that, you know, you come back when, on the date that we set to resume the hearing on this matter. But if we could hear from Christine Lewandowski tonight, I would ask that we do that since, since she did make clear very early in the meeting that she wanted very much to speak tonight. Is that all right with members of the board? Yep. Carrie or Justin, can you move Ms. Lewandowski over?
Moved her over, but I don't see her.
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. There she is.
Mr. Mueller?
Can't quite see her. Let me see if she's on my other screen.
She was on the second page.
Maybe, well, she's on my first screen. Maybe you can speak
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just changed.
Okay.
I just changed screens, and there she is. If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, if you could state your full name and spell your last name.
Christine Lewandowski. My last name is spelled L-E-W-A-N-D-O-S-K-I. I want to thank everybody and good evening and for the ability to speak and I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I served thirty-three years in the employ of three New Jersey municipalities, including the last of twenty-six of those thirty-three years as with Princeton Township, its successor, the municipality of Princeton, as the deputy development officer, the deputy zoning officer, and the historic preservation officer. I was also a member of the Hopewell Township Planning Board for seven years, and I had five years as chair and vice chair, so I know the difficult decisions that planning board members face. I don't support the intrusion of the university's project into the national register historic district and Prospect Avenue's streetscape. I do not support the demolition of the three historic houses and the moving of the Court Eating Club. I do not support the proposed landscaping and the building of the proposed new college into the national register historic district. All of these actions are unprecedented. I, in my experience, I've never seen the university encroach so much into a nature that is residential in Princeton. I do support the report of the Princeton Prospect Foundations, its conclusions and recommendations, and I support the recommendations of the Historic Preservation Commission. The university could be praised for starting an engineering and environmental engineering school, but it is ironic that the proposed project will bring environmental damage to an existing developed streetscape. It will take away the stored energy in the buildings, and it will also use most energy in the demolition of these houses and moving and construction of a large masonry building. The former Court Eating Club should be incorporated into the design of the new college. This will be in keeping with the existing streetscape and will provide an old-world design juxtaposed with modern structures. And it would be in keeping with the university's two thousand and sixteen master plan. Princeton has a history of moving buildings, and this is a, but this is a radical radical departure of demolition and introduction of changes in the streetscape that is not compatible with Princeton's history. The moving of buildings was mostly done at a time when there were no ordinances and guidelines. But we now have ordinances and guidelines to help us in the present. Kevin White, in his landmark planning book, The Image of the City, reflects the way people create mental maps and images of the cities where they live and work. His book studies different characteristics of cities that help people create personal mental images to help them navigate towns and cities. The demolition of the three historic houses, and I do believe that they are historic from what I've heard of, that they would be eligible for the national register, and the movement of the Court Eating Club changes our mental maps and images and the movement of the Court Eating Club changes our mental maps and images that we have of Prospect's streetscape. Most people experience architecture and develop sites from the public street. Therefore, it is extremely important that development respect existing streetscapes when they are planning established, when they are excuse me, my glasses are very fogged. Therefore, it is extremely important that development respect the existing streetscapes when they are pleasing established streetscapes. At me, it creates a negative visceral response to this proposal. When I first heard of the university's proposal, I couldn't believe it. This is not good planning. I think that David Kinsey did an excellent job talking about how the C variance did not that the applicant did not meet its requirements for granting of variance. And I'm just gonna touch on it quickly. The benefits of the proposed deviation must outweigh its detriments, and the proposal must be better for the community than the zoning requirement. The applicant has not provided an argument for this variance. Its deviation does not outweigh its detriments, and the proposal is not better for the community. The university cites in its variance application that they are improving the current conditions and that a detrimental impact on the neighboring Prospect apartment site is not a concern. They say it is not a concern because they own the Princeton apartments, and this project is in their own self-interest. But the municipal land use law uses the word community. The law requires the applicant to notify properties within 200 feet of the variance request. The list of owners, which is on page 3 of the applicant's minor site for 91 Prospect, there's 64 property owners, and the university owns 21. That means there are 43 property owners just in 200 feet of the of the project that are not university properties. The community, though, is much more than the adjacent university property. It is more than the property owners within 200 feet. The community is of the people who work, live, and visit in Princeton. The university is altering the perception of the streetscape by the demolition and the moving of a national register building and introducing landscape and a structure at the present court site, not in keeping with the historic development of the street. And Clifford Singh was very good in showing how the national guidelines are not being, you know, you can say, well, what is the good thing to do here? Yes, they're not obliged by the guidelines, but what is the really good thing to do here for the community?
Ms. Lewandowski, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we're we're at eight minutes. I was hoping it would be three. And I know you've waited a long time, but I need to ask you to please wrap up, okay?
Okay, I'm gonna ignore a lot of what I wanted to say then. I just want to say that when the university moves or demolishes 91 Prospect, the state and the feds will have to look at the different different historic district because the university will be taking a structure out of it, and that will be altering the district. What I don't understand is why the university is making changes, including changing the culture between the community and the university. They are driving a wedge between the two. There is no peaceful coalition, and the question is, what is the right thing to do? So I'm, you know, Clifford demonstrated that this has been done in the past, and I suggested everybody take a step back, take a deep breath, and form a task force composed of the community and the new university to see if a solution for both can be reached. Thank you very much.
Louise, could I make just could I make a really suggestion? That Christine just very, very quickly summarized the points that she dropped. It looked like Christine, you're reading from from a paragraph text, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I if you want to introduce that as oh, three, we can do that. But to do that, I think in fairness to the university, they should at least have an idea of of the parts of the text that were not read in full.
Okay, I can I can do that very quickly without going through.
Is that all right? Is that all right, Louise?
Yes, yes.
I referred to, I would, I wanted to refer to Mr. DeGrazia's memo, and I wanted to point out the fact because the university has been saying they're not subject to review, but the municipal land use law 10 4055 D 110 clearly states that the that the planning board, if it makes available an application to the Preservation Commission, they can review the application. And it doesn't matter if it's in the historic preservation element, it can be in any component element of the master plan. And I talked about about the review by the feds and state historic preservation changing, looking at the district, which will have to be reevaluated and see if the integrity has been, you know, the integrity will have to be examined. And that's that's a quick summary.
If you could, if you could send that to the planning office. Thank you. That'd be great.
And I would appreciate a copy as well.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Carrie, is that oh, oh, three?
That's oh, three. And David, are you still there? David Kinsey? Okay.
Okay, so thank you, Ms. Lewandowski. That we're gonna stop public comment for tonight right there, and we need to find a date to continue this application. We have two meetings coming up. I think both agendas are full, but I won't, I'll leave it to Carrie to explain more about that and I'm not sure whether we'll need a an extension or not, but I'll let her speak to that as well.
Okay, yes, we do have two meetings, and the next meeting is two involved situations, simplify living and land win. And then we have Landmark at Princeton on the 8th and another discussion that we will be that will give refer to us by the council. So we might be able to continue it on the 8th. But Landmark, I don't know if Landmark is going to take a long time, so that's up to you. September is our next meeting date, September 23rd. The university is coming back with another plan for the university Health Services Building. And I was just communicating with Mr. DeGrazia today, asking if we can put them on for the 23rd. I think this would be nice if we can resolve this first, but that's just my opinion. So I don't know where we stand. And then we have two meetings in October.
So so what does the 24th agenda look like, Carrie? You said?
23rd, I was offering you the service.
No, no, I was talking about later this month. You said there's two matters on?
No, there's only one mat this tonight's hearing. And the 24th, we did not schedule anything. I explained to you that we have a meeting on the 1st and the 8th, and I did not think the board wanted to meet four weeks in a row. Is the board agreeable to meet next Wednesday?
I'm not gonna be here.
Neither am I.
I'm gonna be away, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be away as well. Okay, so well, let's get, let's, well, I should ask Mr. DeGrazia in the university is July 8th, a day that we could take this back up again? Starting with public comment, you would be second on the agenda, as I understand it, behind Landmark, which is an application that we have, you know, is probably not going to take a whole lot longer to finish up, but then that's I hesitate to say that because, you know, stuff happens.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to remind the board, I believe where we were with Landmark was that an enjoining property owner who had just come to town, we were gave him some time to review the materials. So I guess the board would need to make some time available for that property owner to speak up if he has any questions, and then the board needs to deliberate. And I forget, do we? Yeah, I guess we had public comment. I can't recall.
We did have public comment and and we closed it except for Mr. Scott. And and right, and but we do need to go over the, you know, conditions and whatnot.
But yes. Ms. Wilson and and Mr. Mueller, can we revisit an earlier start time? Or or it's then noticing is that troublesome from a noticing standpoint?
We would have to do a special notice for that, and I think we would have to put something in the paper if we change the time. Not sure.
The applicant would not have to renotice. It'll just be carried, and we would actually announce tonight when it's being carried to and time. But I think Carrie's right that we certainly want to have something in the paper indicating that we're we're changing the start time.
How's 9:00 AM?
We might finish by 11:00 then.
Well, what is what do board members think of potentially 6:30 start time? I was thinking that we would take it up with the executive committee at the next at our next meeting in July, but but I certainly understand that these, you know, if you want to have only two meetings before the we basically break for the rest of the summer, those meetings are going to be full. And and starting those meetings earlier is probably a good idea.
Excuse me for interrupting. For Landmark, though, the residents who are interested, they're aware of a 7:30 meeting, so we promised that they would start first. And if we started at 6:30, then either we start with this, and then we get interrupted and then come back, or we start at 7:30.
Yeah, okay. And what did you say, Carrie, that we have on July 1st?
Land, land win, the continuation from a year ago and simplify living.
Madam Chair, I really don't think Landmark's gonna take very long, since we've already heard the full presentation and had public comment.
Yeah, yeah, that's the best bit.
Let's let's stick with 7:30 and then look toward going to 6:30 starting in September. Does that does that sound okay to people? Hypothetically, I'm seeing at least a few nodding heads. Okay.
Makes sense.
Okay. So does does July 8th work for the university to continue this?
Yeah, I think it will. I don't see any of my consultants saying they they're not available. So July 8th, we would appreciate that. Knowing that after this, we have a fairly big application with the ES and Cs.
Yes.
We would appreciate also looking towards finding a date or, you know, seeing if there's the ability for to reserve some time or special meeting as you look forward and keep it keep it on the schedule somewhere. You know, this, it was filed in November, so we're getting to the year point.
Yeah, point taken.
Mr. DeGrazia, would would the university be comfortable with us then doing Cs in September and bumping the healthcare center? Because I know it's a higher priority.
I have to add, yeah, probably, but I have to, you know.
Well, you can let us know. We have some time for that.
Okay.
Christopher, you're gonna have to renotice then because we don't have a date. And we haven't, we haven't even taken jurisdiction.
Oh, no, no, I assume that that's talking about, oh, no, 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 I was assuming that we will carry both of these to July 8th.
Yes.
Right? Knowing that we won't get to the Cs, but you're carrying the other, so we don't have to renotice. And then at that time, we would have a new date. I was just asking you to look ahead to see if it identified by July 8th. I'm hoping that we'll have a spot to move into.
Okay, well, if we're gonna do that, and that's fine with me, we're actually gonna have to take jurisdiction and then just notice and then just announce we're carrying it to the to the 8th.
Yep, that that would, we would appreciate that.
And that is that's over the Cs application. Because we haven't, we haven't taken jurisdiction yet over that application.
So are we, in effect, taking jurisdiction at this very moment, Mr. Mueller? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I think what you should do is just announce that we're gonna, you know, the way you normally would, that the next item on the agenda is blank, and that I'll announce the jurisdiction is proper, and that we'll announce at that point that it's being carried to the 8th of July along with along with 91 Prospect application.
Okay, the item on the agenda after the minor site plan related to 91 and 116 Prospect Avenue is Trustees of Princeton University Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan, Environmental Sciences, School of Engineering and Applied Sciences ES and Cs at Ivy Lane and Prospect Avenue, block 49.01, lot 5, and block 50.01, lot 18. This is file number P 2020 872P.
Improving publication and service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you.
And I guess it just, all we have to do is announce we're carrying that, and we're carrying the remainder of the 91 Prospect application to the 8th of July.
Yes, and so all you members of the public, of whom there are still 45 at least, thank you so much for your patience. I'm really sorry that we did not get to more public comment tonight, but we did want to give the the experts, historian and planner extra time, as was requested, and we appreciate the university as well, listening to all of the thoughts and recommendations, and we will see you all again, hopefully, on July 8th.
Right, and you will not.
Meeting will start at 7:30.
Right, and members of the public, you will not be getting any further notice with respect to.
Further formal notice, right, there's probably, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Right, and just just so there isn't confusion, July 8th, for these two applications that were on the agenda this evening, our next meeting is July 1st.
Correct, yes. Yeah, different other agenda items.
And these two matters are being adjourned to July 8th, 7:30, and anyone that wants to participate is able to go to the agenda on the website and find the link there, I assume.
Right, and there'll be there'll be two other items before these two items, but hopefully they won't take very long.
And one final thing is I did make note of all the people that had their hands raised in order, and I'll try to call them in that order.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Philip. Okay, well, David Cohen usually moves to adjourn, so someone else needs. Don't everybody speak at once, or maybe you should.
I will second Mr. McGowan.
I see seconds. Mr. Texarney, you raised your hand. Did you want to make a comment or just move to adjourn?
I was moving to adjourn.
Okay, fabulous. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you all very much. We'll see you next time.
Okay.
Was there a triple play, Louise, in the Yankees game?
I I promise I wasn't watching the Yankee game, but yes, I did. It did have something pop up on my screen.
You heard a report.
I did. I just saw that. I did. I I just saw that I had to click on the X to make it go away.
Well. Good news, the Phillies are, well, they're actually, they're off tonight, but I've been trying to stay awake and watch the LA games and.
I thought the Phillies were off every night.
It's a straw. There you go. That's a good one, Mr. O'Donnell. I like that.
On that note, good night.
Good night. Oh, we're still recording, yikes.
Yeah, well, good night.